All right, are we ready to go? Are you ready? Okay. All right. Good evening. Welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of Monday, August 25th, 2025. I'll now call the meeting to order. I invite you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and will be led by Commissioner Rojas tonight. Place your hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anna, will you please do the voice roll call?
Chair Harland.
Here.
Vice Chair Zick.
Here.
Commissioner Rojas.
Present.
Commissioner Kleebak.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Commissioner Dixon.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
All right, we have no announcements or presentations this evening, and that takes us to public comments for matters not listed on the agenda. Public comments will be heard at this time on items that are not listed on the agenda but are within the Planning Commission's jurisdiction. I'll open public comment. If you'd like to speak, please come to either podium, or if you're on Zoom, use the raise hand option at the bottom of the screen. And if you're joining the meeting by phone, please press star nine to speak. Anybody in chambers like to speak this evening? Okay. Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Call-in user ending in 613, you may provide your public comment.
Yes, hi, good evening. I called last week and raised my hand during public comments for the amendments to the zoning code, and for whatever reason, I was not familiar. I do want to get on the public record that we need to redefine open space. Open space should not be patios or rooftops. And a lot of buildings have gotten around the open space requirement because they put open space on one rooftop and then another rooftop and then another rooftop. I believe the Brickyard West project on Placentia, the Crackerbox project, where a bunch of units wedged into that little lot is considered 80% open space because each building has a rooftop patio, and that's counted as open space. But that's not open space. Open space needs to be defined as space on the ground. That is not covered by a structure. It's just a workaround that developers use and you guys use to put progress in our city. I also want to talk about something I realized about Measure K watching a city's advertisement for the workshops. It was actually very disappointing to hear this out, and it was actually verified at one of the workshops to me personally, is that the intent of the city and the planning is to lower the cost of housing by basically flooding the market with housing. Now, what is not presented to the residents, the homeowners, the stakeholders in this community, is that the city and the planning department intend to lower our property values to achieve this goal. And that's something, big thing that's left out of this plan of Measure K and neighborhoods we all belong. It's not, it's not advertised as the ultimate goal for lower our property value. And it's, it's actually very upsetting to think that the City Council and the city staff are actually working against the residents who pay quite a bit of property tax and such to live here to know that there's actually active that these guys are just actually trying to lower our property values. Measure K and rent numbers aren't going to make the city better. In the years to come, those properties will be extremely expensive, and everything that you've done has been just a wash. You know, I wish that the city would push back against Sacramento and protect the residents' quality of life and not buy into this idea that everyone gets to live wherever they want. I know it's not fair in life that you go look at them where you want or, you know, get to have anything you want. But there are winners and there are losers, and if everybody gets a blue ribbon, we don't have a functioning society. You know, and another thing that's kind of disappointing is that the attitude is we would rather people live in small, elegant apartments and such here without yards rather than encouraging them to be homeowners elsewhere, where they actually gain equity in their monthly payments. And for whatever reason, I think it's political, you know, more people, more congressional seats. But for whatever reason, we want to hold on to every resident, which I don't understand. It's not beneficial to their quality of life. It's not beneficial to the quality of life.
All right.
For the people that live here.
Thank you. Anna, anybody else on Zoom?
Cynthia McDonald, you may provide your public comment.
Good evening, Commissioners. Cynthia McDonald, Costa Mesa resident. Last Thursday evening, I attended the Neighborhoods Where We All Belong meeting hosted by the city. While the subject matter wasn't an exact repeat of the first session, the format felt all too familiar. Another round of perfunctory outreach that lacked genuine public engagement. For years, the city's approach to these meetings has seemed more focused on discouraging participation than fostering it. In that respect, sadly, you've been successful. One glaring issue is the lack of clear information provided to attendees. For example, the sticker exercises. Infantile and unscientific as they appeared were never explained. I had to corner a consultant just to understand their purpose. By then, many attendees had already left, including one who remarked, "This is just the same BS as always." That sentiment echoed throughout the room. These exercises aren't engaging the public, they're alienating us. Costa Mesa needs to stop repeating the same mistakes. Shareettes, posters, stickers, and pushpin variations may look participatory on paper, but they're not resonating with the residents. People want their voices heard, not to sit through a dull meeting for a mere three minutes of public comment that feels ignored by the few officials present. Attendance at Thursday's meeting was noticeably lower than the first. I couldn't attend Saturday's session due to family commitments, so I'm unsure how that one went. But the trend is clear. Interest is waning and frustration is growing. One recurring comment I've heard from residents is the desire for a town hall. I've personally asked the City Council for one. I didn't ask why the city, meaning the council and the city manager, seems so disconnected from its residents. Maybe it's not hatred, maybe it's fear, but either way, the gap between the city, the council, the Planning Commission, and the people is undeniable. Meanwhile, the city of Laguna Beach is holding a town hall this week about parking issues in South Laguna. A town hall about parking? That's the kind of responsiveness we need here? The biggest thing missing from Costa Mesa's outreach? You guessed it, visioning. It's something I've been advocating for since 2016, and it was supposed to be part of the process when Measure Y-K passed. Yet, the list of meetings I've seen, visioning isn't even on the agenda. Same process, same frustration, different day.
All right, thank you. Anna, anyone else?
Perstella Roco, you may provide your public comment.
Neighborhoods Where We All Belong is the latest snake oil the City Council is hawking as we enter the rezoning phase. But we all know it's a lie. They promised if we voted for Measure K, there would be parks, wide tree-lined promenades, and strong inclusionary housing ordinance. All these things the residents assisted upon in all the community outreach. But instead, the City Council voted to help developers make the largest profits possible, which means they have the option of a personal developers agreement and the ability to give the city a few dollars instead of including affordable housing, parks, real open space in their projects. By doing so, the City Council is ensured that we all will never have to be neighbors. The majority of the poor will be restricted to converted motels or high-rise tenements overlooking the emergency operation center. Like Watts, it will have its tower, all concrete, all the time, because with each iteration, the parkland shrinks as the tenements get higher. Forget the community gardens, ball fields, and tree-lined streets. Those are only for the market rate housing. And just so those private equity firms can make even more money, there will be more rental units. And, uh, excuse me, I lost my place. There will be more rental units. The majority of the poor, yes, forget the community gardens. Instead of Chelsea flats and tree-lined promenades, Harbor and Newport Boulevard will be lined with concrete stack-a-shack six feet from the moving traffic. The illusion of staves strolling and cycling will come up against the statistics of those injured and killed if they dare do either. If the Planning Commission has some way of forcing livable development, I beg you to do it now. For years, I have seen green space turned into balconies and parking lots. With no permeable ground, I can guarantee our streets and those tenements will flood, but developers will be long gone and the taxes of the residents will yet again have to pay for the City Council, Planning Commission, and developer short-sighted money grab. Please do something to help what the residents want. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
There's no one else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, anybody on the phone?
There is not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I will close public comments. Now it's time for Planning Commissioner's comments and suggestions. And I'll start to my far right, Commissioner Rojas.
Just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. I appreciate that everybody being here tonight. I do value our city as well, and as you do, obviously with your presence here. And, you know, I've been thinking about, a lot about Costa Mesa and how wonderful this city is. I understand it has its issues and its challenges, to be sure. But it also has a lot of, a lot of power, a mighty little city is the way I look at it. You know, we have the Orange County Fair that just wrapped up here. You know, we have different events in all kinds of a community with the city of the arts. There's a lot of beauty in this city, and I really appreciate seeing our fellow citizens show up here tonight and represent for, whether it's a controversial issue or things that just we care about, I really like to see that. And I also like to say, welcome back to all the kids and the students starting up the new year. I've seen that happening a lot, and it's an exciting time, and that's all I wanted to add tonight.
All right, thank you very much. Commissioner Kleebak?
Yeah, I was able to attend the housing workshop on Saturday. I wasn't able to attend the one on Thursday, unfortunately. It was a weeknight and it was challenging. But I did attend on Saturday, and it was really well facilitated, and we did a walking tour, and people were able to give feedback real time as we looked at, you know, different parts of that part of the city. So really encourage everybody participating in future events.
Commissioner Andrade?
Yes, thanks to the city for another event on connecting with the community about housing opportunities. I got to attend the Thursday session right at the tail end. I really would have loved to gone to the walk, but I had a conflict myself. But, so I do appreciate the city staff took into account a lot of the feedback that we got from the first round. I am sure there will be opportunities to have town hall type experiences. It's very clear that our community is eager to provide their ideas and their insight. Maybe it's a follow-up to what was happening in the walking tour as well. And then I also wanted to, I guess, congratulate Nipper Mesa School District. Our kiddos are back in school as of last week. This is such an amazing, amazing effort. But it also does, again, raise an opportunity for the city to continue its efforts on making our cities walkable. Making cross streets our primary veins that feed into our elementary schools, into our high schools. A lot of our high schoolers are biking, e-biking to school. So how can we continue to make it safe? It would be an amazing goal for us to eliminate the number of deaths that happen in our streets by pedestrians that are trying to walk in our community. So, and then last but not least, I also wanted to highlight, as we embark on this conversation, and just also to respond to one of our, our community members that called in, and again, huge appreciation for those of you that are here in person. This is exactly what we need. We need to hear your voice and your perspective when, as we, as we take actions or make recommendations, I should say. Let me course correct that, make recommendations for City Council. But there is a wonderful UCI study on affordable housing, still pretty new, from 2022, that it's a quick Google search, you'll find the full review, the full document there, there, the metrics, all the data that they collected. But basically, it summarized that affordable housing does not increase crime and does, does not increase crime and does not decrease property values. The complete opposite happens. Instead, it leads to the reduction of crime, specifically violent crime, and enhances property value in our community. It would be great that we work towards a vision where we decriminalize poverty. Poor people are, their first instinct is not to steal, rob, or bring crime or create, right? When we provide a safe and equitable environment for everyone in our community, our community thrives, our neighborhoods grow, and we build closer relationships within our community. So just wanted to plant that seed for all of you all. The 2022 UCI Affordable Housing Study, I highly recommend you all take a good read. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Andrade. Commissioner Dixon?
Thank you so much. I unfortunately was not able to make it to the last two due to work and family commitments, but I will hopefully make it to any continued ones. Just a brief comment about the town hall comment from the public commenter and the visioning. Just if, if staff could have a chance at some point to discuss why we use the, or the consultant discussed why we use the format we use instead of a town hall format, and then also if there's going to be a formal visioning discussion at some point these further in these next meetings. And just to echo the comments of fellow Commissioners regarding back to school's an exciting time, we've got two kids, one at Teewinkle and one at Victoria. It is great to walk to school with them and have them ride their bikes. I am very, very, very concerned about the e-bike safety, as my fellow Commissioner mentioned. What you see on a daily basis going around those schools is pretty alarming. So I'm hoping we can get some stepped up motor officer enforcement and buy-in from the schools. I know there was a safety event recently, or it's coming up recently.
Recent.
Yeah. So more efforts than that are great, but thank you all for being here. This is exactly what we need, more public engagement. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you. First, I'll start off with some of the past events I attended with. First, the West Side Walking Tour was a great event. I attended with Commissioner Kleebak. Wonderful to walk around 19th Street in Placentia. Very wonderful, walkable area. Second, I wanted to congratulate Public Works on their pavement program. They've been out refreshing, updating some of our pavement in the area, some crosswalks, things like that, making them really bright, especially with back to school, as other Commissioners have been mentioning. Now the, the crosswalks really pop out and want to encourage everyone to drive safely, make sure our kids get to school safely. I know the city is in the process of working on a Safe Routes to School action plan, which will even further develop our infrastructure in and around the school zone areas. So, but we can also do our part, drive safely whenever it's school hours. Next, I also wanted to congratulate Costa Mesa Sanitary District Director Arlene Schaefer. She had served on the Sanitary District Board since 1994 with a three-year break in the middle. She is now retired from that board. She was my elected representative. I wanted to congratulate her, and I believe they will be appointing her replacement at a meeting next Tuesday, if I have that correctly. Some future events. On August 31st at 1:30 PM at the Norma Herzog Community Center, I believe this is hosted by the Historical Society and the Fire Department. There'll be a talk, an event about 100 years of the Costa Mesa Fire Department, from volunteer through city incorporation through today. So if you're interested in learning more about our fire department, I encourage you to attend. On September 10th will be the next Neighborhoods Where We All Belong Visioning Event, specific to North Costa Mesa. And on September 13th, save the date because that is ArtVenture. And you can learn more about that at artventurecm.com. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair Zick?
Thank you, sir. I am thrilled to see so many people in the audience. Your opinions matter to me. I will listen very carefully to whatever it is you've come to say tonight if you speak from the podium. The more public engagement we have, the more informed our opinions and our recommendations and decisions will be. So I greatly appreciate this. It resonated with the comments from the three public commenters. I think they bring up some important and significant concerns, and I want to let them know, if they're still online, that I heard them and I take them seriously. Also, I have made requests in the past for a list of all the SB9 projects. Want to thank Director Ty for providing that to me and the rest of the commission. SB9 projects, for those not familiar, SB9 being a law passed out of Sacramento that allows somebody to take their R1 lot, their single-family lot, subdivided into two lots, and on each of those two new lots, build two new dwelling units, essentially four units where you have one house. And I was very interested in knowing where in the city we have approved projects that have done that. And with one exception on the west side, just for your information, the balance had been on the east side in that so far. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I just have one comment tonight. I wanted to thank Public Works and the City Manager's Office for relocating a sculpture. You may not have noticed if you came in through the front doors, but it's located on the corner by the edge of the community room. It's called Artist's Vision. It's actually donated to the city, I believe, in 2016. It's actually the first and only piece that's been accepted by the city. It has bounced around locations around City Hall. It's finally seeing some, some daylight in what I hope might be actually a sculpture garden on this portion of City Hall. So thank you very much for that. All right, that takes us to Consent Calendar. We have one item on Consent Calendar tonight. All matters listed on our Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be acted upon in one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless an item has been pulled by a member of the Planning Commission staff or the public. Anna, has anything been pulled tonight?
No, there has not been, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commission, we have a motion on Consent Calendar item number one, the minutes. Move to approve?
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Martinez, second by Commissioner Dixon. Let's call for the question.
That motion carries seven zero.
Great. We have two public hearings tonight. The first one, Anna, will you please read the title?
Public hearing item number one, Continued From the July 28th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting, Updates to the City of Costa Mesa Procedure for Determining Shared Parking Requirements, Please note, we have not received public comments on this item. This is a call for any ex parte communications.
Seeing no ex parte communications, all right, Ms. Curly, the floor is yours.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Caitlin Curly, Assistant Planner. I am joined by my colleague Dan Inlos, Economic Development Administrator. And this evening, we are presenting some updates to the Shared Parking Requirements Table. This proposed update is one of the 11 technical code cleanup items presented to the Planning Commission on July 28th of this year. Items one through 10 were reviewed by the Planning Commission on that date. However, Planning Commission recommended that this particular item be continued to this meeting on August 25th. The zoning code requires new developments, major remodels, and new tenants to provide a minimum number of parking spaces based on the specific use of the property as outlined in Table 13-89 of the Costa Mesa Municipal Code. However, mixed-use developments require, are required by the zoning code to use the application of the City of Costa Mesa Procedure for Determining Shared Parking to calculate the required parking for the development. In this case, mixed-use developments include developments with a mix of commercial, industrial, and/or residential uses. The current shared parking table was approved in 1985. However, development patterns, tenant uses, and driving trends have changed over the past 40 years, which makes updating this table to reflect modern parking demand essential. The zoning code does allow updates to the shared parking table by City Council resolution. The shared parking table works in the following way. First, staff collects a tenant list from the applicant, which includes the tenant's uses and floor area of each suite within a mixed-use development. Staff then calculates the required parking based on each of these uses to find the maximum demand required for the use. The distribution adjustments are now applied to the maximum demand to calculate the required parking within each hour and weekends and weekdays. The highest of these numbers is the code required parking for the mixed-use development. In this case, it would be 56 required parking spaces. The updates to the shared parking table include modifying the hourly adjustments to reflect current peak parking demand for each use. For these updates, staff has used the most current industry standard sources, which are the Urban Land Institute's Shared Parking Third Edition and the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Parking Generation Sixth Edition. The ITE source obtains data from site-specific case studies, while the ULI obtains their data from empirical sources, including site-specific case studies. The data for the 14 original uses were updated, and new data was provided for some additional uses. The total number of units proposed in the updated Shared Parking Data Table is 26 uses. Staff has updated Page Five of Appendix A, provided to you as a separate document prior to the hearing, to reflect the hourly parking adjustments for residential uses. No changes to the methodology or data sources were made as part of this revision. The original shared parking table included 14 uses. The proposed updates further refine many of these uses into more detailed categories. For example, the original retail use has been broken into several, several different subcategories. In addition to the more detailed uses, the proposed updates include the addition of several common uses seen in the city today, including gyms, health clubs, studios such as dance and martial arts academies, event centers, and active entertainment, which are businesses like escape rooms. Staff conducted several case studies to evaluate the potential impacts of the proposed updates. In two of these case studies- In two of these case studies, shown here, the proposed updates to the Shared Parking Requirements Table resulted in a decrease in required parking at the sites. These sites included a large shopping center with a mix of uses, and similarly, a medium commercial strip center with other mixed uses.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm very excited to see this incredible tool we've been using for decades now get an update to increase our accuracy so we can continue to facilitate a vibrant collection of businesses in the City of Costa Mesa. The updated shared parking table maximizes efficiency by supplying real demand, avoiding overbuilding while accommodating peak needs. This frees land for revenue-generating uses, public amenities, or landscaping, making sites more productive and attractive. By expanding the number of uses, use types in the shared parking table, it encourages a greater diversity of businesses and supports mixed-use and adaptive reuse. The system relies on current industry-centered data, giving applicants and staff predictable, transparent requirements that streamline the process. In turn, it lowers parking construction and maintenance costs and fosters reinvestment across the community. The General Plan Conformance is spread out across multiple land use policies, namely 6.2, 6.7, and 6.19, which are mentioned in the staff report. But I like this specific section directly cited from Page 16 in the land use element. The amendments align with the several policies of the general plan by more productively using space, conserving land use resources and allowing other uses for that space which add vitality to our urban areas. The proposed ordinance is exempt from environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to SEQA Guideline Sections 1506.1b, 3, common sense exemption, in that in there are, there is no possibility for that, for the proposed amendments to the City of Costa Mesa's Procedure for Determining Shared Parking Requirements to have any significant impact on the environment. And with these findings, we recommend, the staff recommends the Planning Commission find that the project is exempt from the provisions of the Environmental Quality Act pursuant to aforementioned section, and recommend that the City Council approve the amendments and adopt a resolution updating the City of Costa Mesa's Procedure for Determining Shared Parking Requirements with the revised Page 5 of Appendix A. And that concludes our presentation.
All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Curly and Mr. Inlos. Commissioners, any questions of staff? Commissioner Zick? I'm sorry, Vice Chair Zick.
Thank you. Let me start on Page 6, and thank you, Mr. Inlos and Ms. Curly for your presentation. Page 6. And I'll just use the retail as the example for my question. In your proposed granularity within the retail category, if there is a use that you've identified as a grocery store, and at some point, the grocery store goes out of business, and a new application comes in for a department store, would you consider that a change of
In terms of this parking table, yes. The new business would be evaluated under the different category.
How about in terms of the zoning code?
Yes. We have separate uses in the land use matrix for grocery stores and department stores.
Keep that in mind as I ask my next question. On Page 7 of the staff report, and by the way, are you able to provide the address of your two case studies? I would have loved to have gone out and visited them before this meeting, but you didn't include that in the staff report, or I couldn't find it. Can you provide that?
Yes, we can, Commissioner.
Okay. If you just email it to me, I'd appreciate that.
Of course.
Okay. So I'm looking at the table, and I understand the math, I understand what you're presenting in that table. Further down than the last paragraph, you indicate that when you went in and did your study, staff observed a parking surplus. And my question, and I'll use Case Study 1 as an example, because I don't see where you provided this, what was the number of surplus parking stalls that you observed?
Thank you for your question, Vice Chair. Staff did, went out to the site and casually observed the surplus. We did observe a significant surplus at both these sites. The specific number of spaces was not calculated due to time constraints.
Makes it a little bit difficult for me to assess, then, whether your new formula, which by calculation says, in the first case, there'd be 51 surplus spaces, without knowing what you actually observed, it's a little bit difficult for me to determine. That's just a comment, but you've answered my question. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions? Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you. Vice Chair Zick just asked my first question, so thank you. I wanted to clarify what the numbers in the table mean. Are the numbers in this table the relative demand for parking, such that at some point it'll reach 100%? Or is this table indicative of how much required parking will be filled?
Commissioner Martinez, the table is, provides you with percentages, and those percentages are to reflect the percentage of the city required parking ratio for that hour for that use.
So, we expect, I'm going to use office because it's the first column, that for an office at 10:00 AM on a weekday, it will fill four parking spaces per thousand square foot. Or are we saying that it will be busiest at 10:00 AM on a weekday?
The shared parking table calculates at 10:00 AM for offices with less than 25,000 square feet, that first column. That means on a weekday, there would be a requirement of four parking spaces per thousand square feet.
Okay. So there will be a code requirement of, but I'm saying, is that because we expect that much of the required parking to be filled? Or is it because that's when it will be busiest?
You're lending from the tables from the ULI report and the ITE, which are recommending that that's the peak time for that office use.
Peak time, so busiest. Thank you. The, let's stick with the offices. It's different in only three cells. There's two office columns, right? The differences are only on weekdays, at noon, at 4:00, and at 6:00. And the differences are only 1%. So why have two different office columns?
Yes. During, we've noticed that during noon and at 6:00 PM are some of our busiest times and oftentimes are the generator for the required peak parking for most properties in the City of Costa Mesa. Therefore, any kind of additional clarification or accuracy in that space has proved to be beneficial.
Same thing with a grocery store, between in its own column, weekdays and weekends, exactly the same. We expect a grocery store to be exactly the same amount of busy on a weekday and on a weekend, except at 6:00 AM. Is that accurate? Is that what we expect from a grocery store, for it to be exactly as busy weekdays and weekends?
That is the data, that is, that is an accurate reflection of the data from, from the ULI study, yes.
Okay. Let's go to restaurants. The restaurants, there's perhaps some overlapping categories in here. I think a restaurant could have less than 300 square feet of public area, have, be a fast food drive-through, and sell breakfast. So, in a case like that, where it fits into multiple use categories, which, which column do we use to calculate that?
Right. So, in that situation, Commissioner, what we'd be looking at is the description, land use description letter that we receive from most situations for most businesses when they describe how they're going to operate. And those letters are really important, because they'll tee off which one of these is probably most appropriate. For example, there's some fast food places that have a drive-through that don't encourage indoor seating, in which case, using the fast food drive-through would be most appropriate. And then there's some that very focused, much, there's a lot of focus on breakfast, in which case, we'd want to highlight that for the potential parking impact, since this is a shared parking calculation. So very much to base, based on the land use, the description of use that's provided by the applicant.
The same page. Not really a question. Well, maybe it is a question. But we require 10 parking spaces per thousand square feet at bars, nightclubs, breweries, active entertainment, places with alcohol. So what we're saying is, drive to places that serve alcohol. Has the police department ever had a comment about that requirement, that we require parking at places that serve alcohol?
So, and specifically tuned to this update, there was no discussion with the police department, because we're merely updating the parking requirements as, as priorities established in the zoning code.
Residential. I think roughly the same comment as with offices. Is that the percentages across rows quite similar? Is there a reason to not just say residential x percent? Keep it simple?
Yeah. Again, with greater flexibility, we get to have a greater diversity of uses, and I think there's a strong economic benefit of that. So as we increase the, kind of, what we match with parking to the uses, I think that's going to benefit kind of accurate parking reflection and get us a better number as for estimated parking demand.
I mean, the greatest flexibility, for example, for residential or with the office requirement, would be to permit the least amount of parking for the business owner. So for an office, that would be, I believe, the less than 25,000 square foot requirement. It's down a percent from the 25, greater than 25,000 square foot requirement. And across all of these residential, it would be to, I don't know, I believe studio is the one that's lowest across the board, which would provide the greatest flexibility, no?
Yeah. We're trying to balance flexibility with accuracy. We're trying to still reflect the accurate amount of parking that would be required for the uses, to make sure that we account for the use, the required demand for parking, both for visitors and guests and employees.
All right. Did we look at any other cities? Do any other cities have a program that's similar to this? And did they have similar numbers?
I did look into many adjacent cities and their policies for parking. None of the nearby cities that I surveyed used a shared parking adjustment policy.
All right.
I would add that we've used, we've used this table for over 40 years with great success. It's been actually the, one of the best tools to help us accommodate additional uses, unique uses, and diverse uses in all of our shopping centers. Some of the hotels or restaurants or active entertainment spaces that I tend to frequent are only in the city because of the flexibility provided in the shared parking table, and then the comfort that it comes with the accurate reflection of their parking for the other uses in the center.
Yeah.
And then, can I add on, just very quickly?
Sure.
Thank you, Chair. With regard to the question about other cities, having been in many other cities, typically a shared parking application in other, in another city, the applicant would have to commission a traffic engineer to do a site-specific study where they, where they would use the same numbers that are before you tonight. And so, everyone would have a case-by-case study at the expense of the applicant, and to be peer-reviewed by the city's traffic engineer on a case-by-case basis. The procedure that the City of Costa Mesa has, in addition to the adopted numbers, allows for a more streamlined application of that. And so, it's, I can see it internal, from internal practice, is that it's more efficient for both staff as well as on the applicant's side. But the methodology is the same, we just have it on a, in a more internalized fashion. So I hope that helps. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Just a hypothetical on restaurants. Suppose there are just two uses. Fast food with drive-through, restaurants without breakfast. Okay? Just those two, just to make this simple. At noon on a weekday, the fast food with drive-through is busiest. At 8:00 PM on a weekend, the restaurant without breakfast is busiest. Okay. Restaurant without breakfast closes up, they go away. Then we got a restaurant with breakfast, where it is also busiest at noon on a weekday with the fast food with drive-through. So if that development, when they were first being approved, they, they went with the first option, the lowest amount of parking available for fast food with drive-through and restaurants without breakfast, use the lowest amount of parking available. And then, the restaurant with breakfast comes in, and now they require more parking than they did before. What is now the process on our end for that?
Yeah. So, first, just to clarify, in most cases, when a retail center is developed, they, they anticipate that there's going to be a, a collection of uses over time. It's very rare that they, they typically build one specific type of use. But if that was the case, and they, they built the lowest required parking for this space, and this table couldn't satisfy their need, as Director Carrie Tai just mentioned, what they would go through is they would go through the discretionary review process to provide the study to justify, to see if they can justify the proposed use in the space. So there's still another alternative that we allow for them to evaluate with a parking study.
Which discretionary review process would that be? Would it, would it be up to Director? Would it come to us as a planning commission?
It depends on what the proposed use is, and then the location, the zoning. There's some various characteristics that would determine that answer.
Okay. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Dixon?
Thank you so much. So just a couple of questions regarding, so breweries and distilleries. Because Carl Strauss could count as that, but it's actually a restaurant, but it's also kind of a bar. You know, and then the stuff on Randolph as well. I mean, there's, there's a lot of examples of breweries and distilleries that are acting as nightclubs. And so, is that going to be an application? Is that going to be something determined at the staff level about which to apply and how to apply it when they submit their application?
Correct. So whenever a business comes in, they, for submitting for a business license or for plan checks, we review that, that use, oftentimes ask for a description letter if there's any kind of clarification that we need, and then we apply the most appropriate use per the land use matrix. So in this case, if we had a distillery that was not providing any kind of ancillary uses and was really a distillery, it would clearly fall into the brewery and distillery space. If it had other uses that made the, the collection of uses more complex, then it would be that description letter that would help the planners kind of understand what's the most appropriate use to assess that property and the use.
Okay. And, and, because I'm thinking of something that doesn't have a tasting room, that's just a brewery, maybe has a retail side of it. And so, 10 per 1,000 would be too high. So would you, potentially, if that's, you know, depending on the operational characteristics, right? If they're not having a public visit all the time, or if they're not having, you know, a regular foot traffic or something like, for instance, a convenience store or a grocery store, would they be, would they be penned into that? Or would they have to seek a variance? Would they have to, or could that then be applied to, you know, industrial production or something, another category?
Yeah. So, we would review all uses, the entire square footage of that use is evaluated, and found the best match in our land use matrix. We have 161 uses in the land use matrix. We try to apply the best one possible. And in that process, then, the associated additional development standards or requirements would apply, which includes the shared parking ratios that are required for that use.
Okay. That's helpful. And then, let's see. I think that answered my, oh, and so regarding the inability to obtain sufficient data for churches and other religious assembly uses, or racquetball intense facilities, industrial uses, et cetera, so, as a director of reference, we, we will have a traffic study, right? When there's a specific use that comes in that has characteristics which may require a traffic study, right? If this is.
Correct.
So.
These uses are still uses that are listed in our land use matrix. They still have required parking in areas where they're permitted or conditionally permitted. Just because they're not on the table doesn't mean that they're not, they don't have there's a path forward. It's just, there wasn't enough data in the ULI or the ITE to justify their inclusion in the. in the shared parking stud, that table itself. And so they would either comply with parking as per, as required in, in the parking required parking ratios table, or they would pursue a, a planning application to adjust or deviate from parking.
Okay. I was, I was just, and to piggyback on Commissioner Martinez's question regarding precedent, looking at other cities. I didn't know how much of an internal look we did on sort of our library of traffic reports and traffic studies that have been done. For, for instance, when we approve Saddleback or when we approve, you know, another religious use, right? And we would have had a traffic study accomplished for that. And so, and also, I know, we, do we have one for our own tennis center, Volcom? Or we probably don't. But I, I just want to make sure we're not, you know, locking people into ratios that may not reflect what's happening right now and that where we have data.
Right. So again, those, those uses can be, can be requested and can be implemented through, through the processes that we have now. In fact, some of these uses too, oftentimes don't sit on a shared, in a shared parking situation.
Right.
And so like our tennis center, it's not really sharing it with anything, anything else, right? So some of these uses, you know, while they didn't have sufficient data, and that's the primary reason they weren't included, it's also because, you know, we, we didn't, we didn't feel like it was necessary to pursue other means, especially looking at historic documents to, to try to get a sense of what the parking demand would be. We really wanted this to be a technical code cleanup that focuses directly on updating the table to the most recent ULI and ITE rates.
Okay. And then my final question is a follow-up on Vice Chair Zick's question regarding the analysis that was done for the case studies. And so are we on a, are we on a particular timeline here? Like, do we have to act tonight? Because that is, that is data that's extraordinarily valuable.
Yeah.
It would be nice to see that.
To be clear, just, just to let you know, the, the properties that were selected and observed, we did observe that there was more than the parking that was recommended to be decreased that was surplus on the site. So we confirmed that the new parking ratios would indeed work on those properties. And we're not, we kind of feigned from providing those, those sites as spelled out on the, on the, on the paper because those are real properties that have a real process or entitlement that they have to go through to get that shared parking updated. And so providing them here and now would, would kind of preempt that or maybe cause confusion because we need to give that, we need to give them the opportunity to provide us the most updated uses on the site to be able to conduct that study accurately.
Completely appreciate that. And I think we, everybody who lives in Costa Mesa has been to park, to, to, for instance, IKEA.
Yeah.
It gets crowded around the doors, but you can park an acre away, right?
Yeah.
Or the lab.
Yeah.
Right? Where it's a knife fight. So I, you know, like I went, I went to Brad Hot Chicken the other night and the Pep Boys lot's full.
Yeah.
So that one's not working. And so I, I do appreciate that flexibility and I do appreciate that, not pinning that down, and I appreciate your explanation. So thank you.
Yep.
To add, if I may, I went out and did the site visits for those two case studies. And I, I can say with relative confidence that there were at least the surplus listed on this staff report on the site.
Vice Chair Zick.
Mr. Inlos, just so I'm clear, it sounded like your answer to Commissioner Dixon was that there was some sensitivity about identifying these locations of the two case studies. And I want to be clear that what you've committed to me is you're going to provide me with those two locations. Is that correct? You've committed to me you'll do that?
That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If there are no more questions from the dais, I will open the public hearing and open public comments. If you'd like to speak, please come to either podium. And if you're on Zoom or the phone, use the raise hand or star nine option. Don't all jump at once. All right. Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom?
Call-in user ending in 613, you may provide your public comment.
Yeah, hi, good evening. Just real quick, I don't have access to the study, but I'm curious if compact cars are part of the parking. I can't tell you how many times that I drive in a parking lot and some of the large car parks in a compact spot. And now both the adjacent compact spot and the spot that the large car is in are both being used by one car. So does this parking study does include the percentage of compact spots to be considered? Can we just make every spot a normal-sized spot and just give the compact parking numbers all together? That's all. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else, Anna?
No, there is not, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm going to close the public comment portion of the public hearing. Commissioners, any final questions of staff or someone want to make a motion? Commissioner Dixon.
Just to follow up on the public commenter's question, baked into the cake on these assumptions as far as spaces, is that assuming a full-size space or is that applying ratio elsewhere in the code where those four can be met? It's all full sizes.
We are not touching any aspect of the small car parking section 13-94 in this, in this discussion, which is in regards to compact parking spaces.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm going to close the public hearing. Now, motion from Vice Chair Zick.
Thank you. I find that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA Section 15061b, III, common sense exemption, and recommend approving the amendments and adopt a resolution updating the City of Costa Mesa's procedure for determining shared parking requirements.
Okay. Motion by Vice Chair Zick, seconded by Commissioner Dixon. Vice Chair Zick, would you like to speak to your motion?
Just simply, thanks staff. I appreciate your effort to do a, a better and more refined and updated job at defining shared parking requirements. So thank you.
Just as a clarification real quick, would we be, would that amendment, that motion also include the associated revised Page 5 of Appendix A?
Thank you. We did receive that. So yes, it would include revised Page 5 of Appendix A. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dixon?
I, I appreciate staff's work on this. Parking is something we wrestle with constantly. And it's something that the public is very concerned with. And as we saw with the Bear Street appeal to the city council and just dozens and dozens of meetings I've been at where parking is the number one concern. So this is a, is a flexible way of addressing that and provide, gives you guys more tools and, and allows us to not pin everybody with necessarily a parking study because we don't have a ratio. So I really appreciate that. That's why I'm supporting the motion.
Okay. Commissioner Martinez.
Yes. So first, I'd like to start with, this way of calculating parking requirements is better than just simply applying the minimum parking requirement at the top of each of the rows uniformly throughout the day. This does result in a lower parking requirement for most instances. So it is good and it is more flexible in that regard. However, I, I still think that the most amount of flexibility, perhaps even the confusion that having five pages worth of spreadsheet and numbers, we, we could do better. And there's a very easy way to make it better. Parking, I see some affordable housing signs and residential is in here and we're about to talk about housing and mixed-use development in our next item. Parking at housing developments costs tens of thousands of dollars to include. It is a very expensive part of a residential mixed-use community. And if there was a way for a residential mixed-use housing project to be more affordable, I would want to support that. If there was a way for a business to not have to worry about moving into another location so that the parking requirement, the minimum that the previous developer built up to, and then now they're moving in, but they have a different, they have a different column, they have different columns on their spreadsheet. And that means that actually, I'm sorry, you have to get a minor conditional use permit or a conditional use permit, and you have to come to one of these public meetings. I would like to avoid that. In the case studies that were provided to us by staff, the parking provided on-site is less than the 1980s shared parking indicated for both of the case studies, one by 99 parking spaces and the other by nine parking spaces. And with this new method, we are still requiring a surplus of parking at both case study sites, 51 parking spaces. And even with that surplus, if we, if we decrease that surplus down to zero between our proposal and what could be provided, we've heard that there were more than 51 parking spaces available at the sites at the peak demand hour, more than 16 parking spaces available at that site at the peak demand hour. And my, my first question was about whether this reflects the parking requirement or the peak demand. And these are, these are peak demand. I don't, I don't doubt that an office at 10:00 AM on a weekday is going to be busiest. What I do doubt is that an office at 10:00 AM on a weekday is going to fill four parking spaces per 1,000 square feet. The easiest way to not have business owners, not have our local businesses have to deal with this table, have to deal with the additional costs of parking requirements, have customers at grocery stores, at retail locations, not have to pay for excess parking that they could have avoided, would be to not require that parking in the first place. So what I would prefer to see out of this table is for every number to be 0%. And that is my substitute motion.
Okay. There's a substitute motion by Commissioner Martinez. Is there a second? Seeing none, that dies. We have a motion by Vice Chair Zick, seconded by Commissioner Dixon. Any other comments? I'll just add, I'll, I'll support this motion. I, I think I decided almost at the outset, not to say that I, I wasn't impressed by the rest of the presentation, but the fact that this is a tool, as you described, Mr. Inlos, that works both for efficiency, not just with the applicant, but also with staff, is something that we need to be doing more of. And so any way to expedite the process as well as the, the benefits of, on the ground for better use of land, I think is, is beneficial. All right. If there are no other comments, let's call for the question.
That motion carries 6-1 with Commissioner Martinez voting no.
All right. Anna, will you please read title for public hearing item number two? Sorry? Oh, okay. Do we need to take a break? Let's take a three-minute break. All right. We are back in session. Anna, will you please read the title for public hearing item number two?
Public hearing item number two, Fairview Developmental Center Specific Plan Land Use Plan Review and Recommendation. Please note, we have received public comments on this item.
All right. Ms. Ty, you will have the floor in just a second. I want to ask you a question, though. I'm, I'm completely confident it's covered in the staff presentation, but given the fact that we do have a number of people here who want to say a number of things on a number of topics, I just want to make sure that they understand what planning commission is being asked to approve tonight and for what purpose. So with that, go right ahead.
Thank you, Chair and members of the planning commission. Chair, would you like me to preface my presentation with that? Or just include it?
However, however is easiest for you to do.
Sure. I think it's best covered at the end because we did plan on covering that.
Perfect.
Thank you so much. And good evening again, Chair, members of the planning commission and members of the public. First, before we start, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce the new, our city's new principal planner, Melinda Dacey. Melinda will be assuming the project management role for the Fairview Developmental Center Specific Plan Project. And in fact, she's been with the city for grand total of one week, and I can tell you she's dived in deeper than any one of us could have imagined already. So I wanted to take the opportunity to welcome Melinda. And, and in the future, you'll see Melinda start presenting on, on FTC progress. So welcome. So to, just to kick off tonight's item, let's see, let's move the agenda. Thank you. So tonight's presentation, the bullet points are on the screen, but we're going to do a quick recap of the May and June study sessions. So the planning commission did hear about this, the progress on FTC first in May. And that was after over a year of internal work as well as community outreach work. So that was the reintroduction and re-daylighting of the FTC event, FTC specific plan effort. And also, we came back in June with a more comprehensive update on the recap, the history, the city-state obligations, an update on the financial feasibility study, and also a recap of the development concepts and alternatives that were covered as part of prior community outreach as well as ongoing discussions. So tonight, I'm going to walk through the prior comments. We're going to walk through some of the questions and update, have an update on what the golf course redesign is looking like. We will go over some specific plan refinements since the last study session and a recap of what staff is recommending tonight. Then there'll be an opportunity for questions, discussion and recommendation, and then we will go over next steps. So from the prior study sessions, planning commission and the public covered a range of different topics. One of the, the, the largest sources of discussion was the development range. As the planning commission and the public will recall, that that range of input was from 2,300 units that came out of the city's adopted housing element in 2022. And the upper range, which was 4,000, and that was one of the concepts that was studied that was just, it was created in, in an effort to have a scenario to study financial feasibility. During the prior discussions, and this is a very high-level summary, there were comments about supporting fewer units to achieve more open space, but also conversely, more open space and perhaps higher density in fewer planning areas. The commission and the public acknowledged the challenge of the affordable housing requirement. And as a recap, the housing element number of 2,300 included about 40% affordability in, in the, in the unit, affordable unit breakdown. And so that was a, the, one of the more significant sources of discussion. You know, and I, I will say at the June 23 meeting, we spent a fair amount of time recapping some of the realities that we have in the development state density bonus laws and the findings from the financial feasibility study. And that really informed some of the recommendation that we'll talk about later in this staff report. The second source of discussion was the development pattern. So some of the concepts had different layouts where commercial areas might be, where the open space concepts might be and how the connectivity would work coming in from Harbor Boulevard. For, for those of the public that, that, you know, aren't intimately familiar with the Fairview Developmental Center site, it is relatively isolated from Harbor. And so that, that was one of the, the points of conversation was that perhaps there could be better ways to connect the FTC property to Harbor, both from maybe a visibility standpoint, but also, you know, use of land. And I'll touch on that as well. The third was the circulation network. There was a lot of discussion on prioritizing transit, looking at the cross-sections and the use of the proposed entry street as well as what likely might look like a secondary access if that comes to be needed and required someday. There were concerns. There were concerns, a lot of concerns actually, about the secondary access road and impacts to the golf course. And that was rightfully brought up because, again, because of the separation of the FTC site from Harbor Boulevard, any secondary access would have no choice but to impact the golf course. And so that was a very worthy topic of discussion. Another very substantial area of discussion was open space and community amenities. We had a lot of interest from folks looking at more open space for a various number of reasons, whether it was one of many sectors for youth sports, just open space in general, open space for public use, perhaps to serve areas of the city that currently are underparked from a park, open space standpoint, not cars. There was mixed input on the type of park improvements, what future open space and park space could be used for. Also, comments about connectivity for pedestrians, more passeos, more ways to get around, and what connectivity options there might be to Fairview Park if feasible. And then there was a whole host of other input received. Potential need for an onsite school also mentioned of community or cultural amenities like libraries, would that be allowed? A plan for safe routes to schools. Fencing, for example, around FTC to separate that from adjacent uses. And then touching upon that secondary access road again, what would happen if a developer needed to talk to the city about that to ensure that the value of that land was discussed and accounted for? So the goal from that recap tonight, we're going to look at continuing some of the discussion on that. But moving on, I wanted to spend a little more time on the secondary access road. And so staff has previously mentioned that the city has secured a golf course consulting firm named Origins Golf Design. And they've worked on a concept surrounding the, addressing the possible impacts from that secondary access road. As the Planning Commission and the public may recall, there have been several alignments. So how that road could look, whether it is more of a straight shot, whether it's got a curve. And then, since then, there's been some logical parameters that guide what that road might look like. And that's reflected in that draft preferred working land use plan. But it's not quite a straight, straight shot. It's got one curve on it, and that's to avoid some of the topography and line-of-sight considerations. But having secured that as a working concept, the golf course consultant has been able to prepare several options in terms of how the golf course impacts can be mitigated. There are about six holes, six golf holes, that will undoubtedly be affected. And it's in one of the more congested parts of the golf course, that part that's nestled between the FTC site and Harbor Boulevard. And so they've been meeting internally with the city's Parks Department, as well as the Public Works Department and the City Manager's Office as that golf course is a city-owned and operated, it's city-owned and contracted to be operated with a golf course operator. So there is a separate process to discuss what that configuration would look like. I will mention as part of that discussion, there is an overarching concern that perhaps, you know, the impact wouldn't be limited to just the six holes. In other words, to evaluate any trickle-down effects from affecting the six holes and whether there are some additional edge conditions that need to be revised in order for the golf course to continue to function smoothly in a way that plays competitively, plays naturally, and the way that the users expect. So I will say that is a continued effort. The other new element of this is that at the last Planning Commission meeting, we did have a majority of the Planning Commission mention that there would be interest in looking at the area of the golf course between the FTC site and Harbor. So I'm just going to nickname that for tonight's discussion as Harbor Frontage. Because the golf course, that part of the golf course is city-owned, and it is outside of the scope of FTC, staff will take that as a separate work effort and forward that on just to ensure that we've captured the majority of the Planning Commission's sentiment on that. I won't make it more formalized than that to make sure the city, that we have a follow-up discussion on that. And so that is covered in your staff report. But when I gave this update, I wanted to make sure everybody knew that that would be an ongoing effort. Next slide, please. And so, lastly, I want to touch back on this development range. And so I want to stress again, as we discussed at the June 23 meeting, the city's responsibility is to create a specific plan for this site that ensures the future development provides all required public benefits and infrastructure, public services, open space, and the appropriate level of development impact fees to support the level of development that will come in. We don't know at this time what, there's no development proposal. We don't know what developer will be interested. But we know that from a financially feasible standpoint, the financial feasibility study informed us that the 2,300 minimum range with the 40% affordable, without any substantial financial subsidy, is not financially feasible. And so if we wanted to start looking at what might be reasonably expected, the typical internal rate of return for a financial feasibility study is about 15%. And if we look at the number of units, we should be planning for about a development range of about 3,800 units to hit 15. There were some initial, I mentioned earlier in the conversation that there was an initial model of 4,000 units. That created an internal rate of return of 16.7. And so based on the time and the factors going into that study, staff wanted to dial that back to where, you know, we hit the industry standard of 15, just so we could reasonably expect a certain level of development range and plan for that in case it does happen. What we would not want to do as a city is underplan and not have the adequate infrastructure and public services to serve what ultimately could be that population. And one of the challenges for us with state density bonus law is that if there even is a maximum range, somebody can come in and use state density bonus law and ask for waivers and concessions to exceed our development range and then not have to provide for a lot of the backbone infrastructure. And so to caution against that, we need to make sure that the specific plan has the adequate requirement and that any environmental review cover that to ensure that environmental impacts are adequately mitigated. And so with that, I will turn it over to my colleagues here, or my, from our consultant team, Suzanne Schwab and Karen Gully. And they'll walk through some of the steps we've taken since the last two discussions. Thank you.
Good evening, Chair and fellow commissioners. And thank you, Carrie, for getting us kicked off this evening. So as the team working on crafting the specific plan, before you hear, I've got a slide detailing some of those additional points of feedback that we have been taking as we've worked through these various study sessions and meetings with all of you, hearing additional comments from the public as well. And so just wanted to walk through the things that Carrie gave at a little, as a high-level recap, the things that we're starting to incorporate within the specific plan itself. So as you can see, you know, we have things such as uses, starting off right at the bat here with the community amenities, such as libraries, schools. Maybe we've heard over the course of our outreach, the ability to have an art center. So things that would support both this new neighborhood, but the community at large as well, including a process for that secondary access acquisition as needed. And then, of course, for the points that were just discussed regarding any reconfiguration and improvements, if needed, throughout phasing as well. We, open space is another large area that we've heard and received some of this feedback. We know that there are some requirements, especially around the general plan and the designated amount of open space. And so there are some options that we've been talking through through for land use regulation and control. And not only would these be reflected in the standards of the plan, but also in our, what we call the Administration and Implementation Chapter, on how that those could be brought forward to achieve a balanced level of open space for this neighborhood. And that also includes then the types of uses that we would find. And we'll cover this in a future slide here. But there are all kinds of, you know, active and passive uses that could be programmed. And of course, we'll be relying on the city's Park Master Plan to help guide that for the future. And that is something we would write then, connecting those two documents. We would say, you know, for instance, that document would be the source for that sort of information. And then, as I mentioned before, we have, you know, a chapter that would include all of these review and approval processes, our Admin and Implementation Chapter. As we are drafting that, we are certainly spending a lot of time going through, you know, what the different application type and decision-making body would be. And we've heard a little bit from all of you on types of things that you would want to see back before you and types of things that would be at a staff-level approval. And then lastly, within that same chapter as well, we often have, need to have, it's a state requirement, a conceptual phasing plan. And so those are going to be things for implementation of the backbone plans that we talk about, the circulation plan, the infrastructure plan. So that's wet infrastructure, sewer, storm drain, and water, as well as public services. And so that'll talk us through and help us to understand through implementation of the plan, when those things should be coming online, how the city should be expecting them, and expectations on the developer for those as well. Of course, we will be relying on our experts for those. We're working with Fair and Peers for circulation, Fusco Civil Engineering for the wet infrastructure component, and partnering very closely with the city's public services, fire and police, as well as your Parks and Recreation Department. So additionally, we'll continue to capture all the feedback that we receive, again, here tonight and anything along the way as we make our way towards City Council and drafting our plan. All right, so speaking of that circulation plan, I'm going to dive right into some additional updates that were reflected as we heard from all of you on the draft street sections that we had shared in a previous session. This also sort of transitions us and leads us back to our draft preferred plan. So we are headed in that direction. We have made several revisions to these cross-sections and the categories along with them as far as those passeos and the multi-use trails go. And you'll see a couple of different options in the cross-sections as well. Oh, sorry. Lastly, we have, sorry, the bicycle framework here, where we've made the addition of two new Class 1 bikeways, incorporating that feedback we heard from all of you about not only safety, but really promoting, you know, a new paradigm for Costa Mesa as far as the availability of bike and pedestrian amenities. And those will be reflected here in a moment as we dive into the promenade and our secondary access road, should that be needed. So the first update here I have for you is the promenade, and this is our option number one. This road sizing, I should say, for all of these street sections, just to take us back for one quick minute here, is based on, you know, projected traffic volumes that'll be refined through this process as we settle on the range and take the draft working plan forward even further. So those will be further confirmed. However, these cross-sections are mid-block. They're not at the intersections. So intersections may warrant right- or left-hand turn lanes and may be slightly larger than those reflected here for mid-block. All right, so now diving back to promenade. We've got these two options. Our first one, before you hear, is the widest right-of-way. It's designed to include ample planting area for shade trees to grow and thrive. It has an eight-foot parkway that can provide shade for this newly proposed Class 1 bike path, which would be on both sides of the street, as you see here, and an eight-foot sidewalk as well. This would leave room for us to be able to incorporate street furniture and benches and really add some activity, both passive and active, along the promenade. Our second option now seeks to reduce the total right-of-way. So we're now seeing a smaller version of that promenade. It also creates a lush landscape with a lot of tree canopy along the edges for both pedestrians and cyclists using this option. And it would, but overall, would reduce the travelings to 11 feet instead of 12 feet, as you saw in the previous. Move along a little further here onto Shelley Circle. So that's that outer edge roadway connection. It's actually a bit of an existing road there now. And we're showing a range of widths for this multi-use path along the golf course edge. And the amount of, depending on the amount of room that's available, this is also the main right-of-way that the EOC will be implementing as they complete their initial construction. It will be further refined then with these additional paths and things through implementation of the specific plan and the master, you know, once the master developer is brought on board. Then we have our secondary access. And again, I have two options to share with you for this one. This would be that road that would potentially be needed for access through the golf course. And option one, as you see here, now incorporates this Class 1 multi-use path on both sides of the right-of-way, as you see here. It maintains a 12-foot lane, also provides that additional parkway space for some landscape and planting, safety with a fence, of course, adjacent to the golf course. And our second option, and I apologize, there's a typo here on the header of my plan. It should say option two, it repeats option one. But in this version, you can see that the Class 1 bike, it keeps the Class 1 bike paths, but also adds a six-foot DG or decomposite granite walking path on one side of the right-of-way. And the path would connect then to the Class 1 on Harbor and sidewalks that meander along Harbor there and also connect up to the Joanne Trail. That would be the intent of adding that. And lastly, we have a local road, so a road that would be more internal to the FTC site. Think of it as a neighborhood road. This one has been revised with on-street parking. We've reduced the vehicle lanes to 11 feet. They had been previously shown at 12. Again, just making the right-of-way a little bit smaller and maintaining that larger sidewalk of eight feet for pedestrians throughout, connecting to trails, passeos, and that larger Shelley Circle Trail as well. So with that, and on the note of trails, I'm going to move us along and into open space, just recapping for you the open space framework. This remains the same from our previous meetings. And in addition to, you know, multifamily housing that is expected to be here, they would also have required onsite private and common open space standards. But what you're seeing here would be the minimum publicly accessible open space. This is flexible and can be implemented in a number of different ways. And there is no maximum on the amount of open space. If a developer comes in with a creative way to bring in additional public open space, that would certainly be allowed under the specific plan. As I mentioned, there are different areas of active and passive programming that could happen, and that would be done in concert with the city's Parks Master Plan. Lastly, then, this will look familiar to you, the staff recommendation, this working draft proposed land use plan as we've been sharing with you over the past few meetings. I'll just recap for the benefit of the public here and those who have especially joined us in person today. We have a range of dwelling units that are being proposed, a minimum of 2,300, consistent with the city's housing element, a maximum of 3,800 dwelling units, as Carrie explained the rationale for earlier. We're maintaining the 920 low and very low-income units that had been put forth in the city's housing element, with the additional 690 also carried forward from the housing element. And those are able to be subsidized further than by the market rate units. Those are considered to be above, likely above moderate. than by the market rate units. Those are considered to be above, likely above moderate. Balancing that with a maximum of 35,000 square feet of mixed-use, commercial, commercial uses, intended to support this, this new neighborhood and area, also support any of the visitors coming in, using parks and other amenities in the area. And then we just walked through the open space. As you see here, we are also planning for those two access points, especially should it be needed, depending upon where a master developer comes in. I should also mention here that the specific plan will be making sure to include in a multitude of ways, whether they be design standards, and those will be reinforced through guidelines. There will be requirements related to site planning, building design and orientation, location and amount of parking required, and various landscape requirements. So with that, we will consider, again, we're going to continue to take in all the feedback we get here this evening and through the rest of our process with city council. I will turn it over to Carrie here for wrap-up and highlighting some of our discussion items.
Thank you. Thank you, Suzanne. So before we launch into the discussion, I do want to cover what is being asked of the Planning Commission tonight. So first of all, as the, as the working draft preferred land use plan has been developed, that's really the purpose to start environmental review. One of the important parts of any planning application, any planning project, as well as, you know, even something as small as a two-unit development requires evaluation under the California Environmental Quality Act. One of the purposes of environmental review is to evaluate a project or plan or any initiative for, for disclosure on environmental impacts. What's an environmental impact? It's everything ranging from lighting to noise to biological impacts to cultural impacts, historical resources, and that's just naming a few. I think there's somewhere between 18 or 19 different environmental topics now. One of the reasons for that, that, this informational study is to inform decision-makers on the impacts of any decision they might make on a project or a plan, policy decision. And so what is being asked? It's to, it's what are we studying? That is the question. For FDC, what are we studying? Staff is recommending, we have to study the minimum 2,300 units set by the housing element. And I will pause and say that that actually is a minimum. Under a state housing element law, the capacity identified on the site's inventory is minimum density. And that means if something, somebody on a, on a particular site doesn't build to that minimum density, the city has to make special findings as to why that didn't happen, number one. And number two, actually identify where else there is capacity elsewhere. And that's one of the reasons that in addition to separate topic, but the RENA number of 11,760, there's a 15% buffer that brings it up, that brings it up 15%, just to accommodate for when something isn't built to minimum. And so I want to really stress that anything in the housing element is a minimum, unlike the traditional development standards where they're stated as maximum. And then the 3,800, I explained a little earlier of that's, that's, that's a responsible planning technique in that we've already identified what's reasonably expected, and we want to make sure that we adequately plan for that. The, the, the project description for environmental review purposes does not and cannot commit the city to any specific decision. In order for any decision-maker to approve or recommend approval of a project, they actually need to have completed CEQA. And so just pointing staff in a certain direction to say, this is the project description for purposes of study, does not commit the city to any decision. And whether it's on a recommendation level like it is on Planning Commission, or it's at the city council level, it, it does not commit the city to that decision. And I will also say there is a attached resolution to your, to the Planning Commission's agenda packet, and that also clearly states that it is for environmental study purposes only, and it does not commit the city to any decision because we simply can't. There's no way to pre-commit. And so having said that, I want to go over a little bit of what CEQA entails in terms of a process and next steps. And so when the city council reviews the preferred plan with the Planning Commission's recommendation, the city will issue what's called a notice of preparation. That is the first step in the environmental review process. It will reflect the project description that is being talked about tonight, as well as the elements of the specific plan that Suzanne recapped that we've, we will be including as part of, after receiving, receiving public input from the last couple of sessions. Issuance of that NOP, Notice of Preparation, is accompanied by a scoping meeting as well. And that will provide additional opportunity for input on what the public might be interested in in terms of environmental impacts that might concern individuals, groups, or areas. And that NOP process helps to solicit these comments and make, make sure that the concerns that are greatest to the community are definitely studied in the environmental impact report as well as those that are required under state law. And it's only after the document is completed that the city can even entertain any, any decision. I will also mention that as part of an EIR, there is an alternatives development. And the, the, it's, it's state-required. You're required to develop alternatives that lessen any identified environmental impacts and that, you know, that continue to serve the greater objectives as well. So a lot of times in other cities, I've seen an environmental impact report be done, and that it's actually one of the alternatives that's selected, not necessarily the project description that started the study. And so really, the study doesn't pre-commit the city in any way, and I've seen results come out in, in any number of ways. And so I think that concludes staff's presentation, and I think we can open that up for Planning Commission discussion, if that's all right with the chair. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Thai and Ms. Schwab. So just to summarize, the very narrow task for the Planning Commission is to recommend or not a preferred land use plan to the city council for the purposes of starting the environmental review process.
That's correct. And also, if modifications are, and additions are desired, that's also possible.
Okay. So let me just jump in with one quick question, and then I'll, I'll open it up to my colleagues, which is the harbor frontage plan, when, and when would that be considered by Planning Commission as either the preferred plan or an alternative?
The harbor frontage plan, as I mentioned earlier, has to be on a separate track. We have to, staff has to receive direction from the city council to pursue, whether it's a feasibility study or whether it's some kind of action on that city-owned piece of land. And then it'll, it'll likely stay on a parallel track. I don't know, at some point it might converge, but because it's outside of the scope and boundary of the FDC site, they likely will run parallel and for the most part remain parallel. Even if there are concurrent review documents, they might refer to each other and make sure they take into account all the different assumptions. But it's, to, to merge it, there's a, there's a logistical and jurisdictional challenge there.
Okay. And just for the clarification for the public, can you bring up a slide that shows the preferred land use plan? I just want everybody to understand what we're talking about when we refer to harbor frontage. So to, to my mind, harbor frontage is basically, it's roughly 12 acres from Fair, the corner of Fair and Harbor, and where that, the green, yeah, basically that section, to move that cursor up a little bit more. Yep, there, straight across. That's roughly 12 acres, which is equivalent to about what the eastern, northeastern appendage, can you kind of scroll over that direction? Thank you, Karen. Yeah. So essentially, that would be city land and eventually city land, and what we would give the state would be the harbor frontage, which has some other opportunities to, for land uses. Okay. So with that, who'd like to start the questions? Commissioner Dixon?
Thanks. I, there's going to be a lot of discussion, I think. And I wanted to just sort of piggyback on what Director Thai was saying regarding what we're doing tonight. So you're looking for a project description for CEQA analysis, right?
Correct.
Okay. So would you, for the public, would you remind or would you provide an explanation of the nexus between the project development at the EIR stage and the ultimate build-out? What, how closely do you have to hew to the environmental, the project description provided in the environmental analysis compared to what is actually built? As long as you don't exceed those envelopes, you're okay? Or would you just briefly give a little context there if you can?
Sure. Yes, of course. The project description for study purposes is simply that. It's the project description for study purposes. What really regulates the limitation on development is what goes into the specific plan. And that will not be adopted until a point at which environmental review is, is complete. In other words, you can make changes to the specific plan well after environmental review is complete. The key is that what is approved in the specific plan cannot exceed what was studied in the environmental review without doing a subsequent or supplement environmental review to cover the exceedance. That's the key. And so it can be forever dynamic if, if, you know, if there's an ever-changing economy or ever-changing desires. But the limiting and, and, and the limiting document is the specific plan. For study purposes, it's simply what was studied. You can always study more if you want to. And so then the relationship to what that is to the maximum build-out, it's really the relationship to how the maximum build-out relates to the specific plan. So anything coming in to be developed has to be within the scope of the specific plan. And then if, if it's all been evaluated under environmental review, then that, whatever the development is, would implement the mitigation measures, it would implement the requirements of the specific plan to ensure that all of these, the infrastructure requirements, the public services are all provided for.
Right. So you'd be, you'd be evaluating the potential environmental impacts of whatever the outside limit of the project description is.
Correct.
So if we had a project description that said 1,000 units, you, you couldn't go above that without a supplemental or a recirculated or something like that?
Correct.
EIR. Okay. So when the NOP goes out, that's going to be for preparation of an EIR based on the project description that we recommended to the city council, and they ultimately approve.
Correct.
Okay. So that's what we're doing tonight. So it's a broad envelope for environmental analysis of all of the different CEQA categories, from traffic, public services, you know, land use, all of those different particular
Correct.
CEQA categories. Okay.
Yes.
All right. And I'll have more questions. I wanted to get that threshold thing out of the way first because I, I'm, I'm concerned that if we, if we say that for study purposes, we're going to analyze the outside limit of the most liberal application of density bonus law and any other thing you can pull out of, we've got Senator Weiner's brain, you know, we can, we're not stuck with that. We're not going to say it's a 19,000 unit development. So I just want to make sure we're all clear on that. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else?
Sure.
Commissioner Martinez?
Sure. And Senator Weiner was just mentioned. I'll just say, big fan. Okay. Let me keep going on that note of minima and maxims. So sticking with density bonus law, if a developer eventually turns in an application using density bonus law in which their proposed number of units exceeds what is in the EIR, do they have to do a supplemental? Do they have to study that? Or because it was using density bonus law, can they go over what's in the EIR?
There are, there's, you know, there's no cut and dry answer to that. Number one, because the scale of development is, is, is so, this is not a project-level site. This is 80 acres, essentially, 80 acres of, of different land use areas. I would say, depending on the uses in the specific, or sorry, sorry, depending on the requirements in the specific plan, if a developer were to submit a master plan that is beyond, just beyond the number of units accounted for in the specific plan, they would likely need a specific plan amendment. They would need to do some kind of supplemental or supplemental, subsequent, sorry, environmental review. However, I think when you get down to the future levels, maybe once it breaks down to an individual subdivided parcel, you know, these planning areas are 10 to 12 acres each. We don't know yet how they could be subdivided. But when you get down to a smaller level, and perhaps the site is sold to a tract developer, and they come in and maybe propose more units than perhaps what that one planning area or that one, yeah, that planning area accounted for, and then you have a cumulative effect of that, so let's say it happens 10 times on smaller parcels, then it starts to take, then density bonus law starts to give you a lot more leeway in terms of what development standards that you may not have to follow because of the necessary waivers and concessions that cities have to grant when they come into, when the application comes in as a density bonus project. So it, it's a, it's a, there's a master plan level look at it, which is what, where we are now. But there's also what happens when this actually gets down to individual developable parcels. And, you know, master developers may sell, they may, you know, reassign, and it's very hard for us to know. So the best guess we have now is to plan as best as, as, as best as we can for a maximum capacity with the indicators that we have. Basically, what will be requiring a certain amount of open space, will require a certain amount of roadways, will require all these amenities and fees, and those end up becoming tempering factors on what actually can fit on the site.
Conceptual land use plan, since we're looking at it. In our Exhibit A, which I'm going to consider what we're actually voting on essentially, it mentions the possibility for standalone commercial. In, in previous versions of a land use plan, I think there was a separate color for just commercial by itself. Does this land use plan indicate where any standalone commercial might be?
So the intent of the specific plan will be to be as flexible as possible. And so as we've been looking at it as it stands, the plan itself would allow for the commercial to happen potentially anywhere on the property. Through this conceptual land use plan, we've identified the most likely places that it would happen due to visibility, wanting to be along high-traffic pattern, you know, areas, and really to also carry forward the intent of feedback we heard from all of you, which was to foster allowing that to happen in a mixed-use type of building configuration. So yes, the initial had it shown where we were, you know, just saying like, look, it could happen in, likely to happen in one area. But as you see it shown here today, and as we're making refinements based on the feedback that we're receiving, we're trying to get, guide the intent of that. But it would be flexible. Again, if a master developer came in and had a program to say, you know, in the type of development we do, that we've been doing in X, Y, Z places, this is where we would like to put it, and we have a tenant that wants X amount of space, and therefore we would like to aggregate more of it together, we don't want to preclude that flexibility. We, the opposite end of the spectrum may be that you have someone who comes in and says, I've been doing this amazing mixed-use across all of these other great areas, and it creates a really nice walkable environment, and we certainly want to be able to do that along the promenade. And so again, we have flexibility for different types of developers that may have an interest in a community like this.
Okay. Another question, just to be clear, for the location of the land uses, as we see them on this map and in attachment in Exhibit A, they're not, it's not going to be that that exact location is going to be a park. It could be that, that square that's in a park is catty-corner to where it is on the land use plan. It's It's flexible, it can be shuffled around, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct, but what you see here is reflective of the minimum acreage of twelve acres that we have been discussing.
Okay, so there'll be roughly the same amount of green at, at minimum?
At minimum.
No matter what?
And this is not reflective of the private open space areas or any common open space areas that would be developed within a residential development but maintained then by that building or HOA or however the, that would be carried forward for operational maintenance.
Okay. In our mobility and circulation segment, there's a discussion about secondary access acquisition process, and I wanted to ask, is that a voluntary process or would that become a required process if they exceed the unit threshold that we've identified?
Yeah, thank you for that question. It's a required process because that's city-owned land. So, the, whoever it is would be required to engage with the city in terms of, you know, use or acquisition or some other configuration of the, of the city right-of-way. And then with that, of course, the impacts to the, to the golf course, right? So, no, it's, it's hand in hand, so it would be a, it would be a process.
Okay, so they have to buy that land area or whatever acquisition process if they do the threshold, they have to?
Yes, they have to somehow work with the city to figure out how they might be able to use it in, in some way, right?
Okay. In the presentation and in our packet, we got our street sections, right? Is that part of what we're voting on tonight?
I think it's, it's part of how, how you're helping to influence the plan. I don't think it's included in the resolution, Carrie.
No.
That's not a part of SEQA necessarily, aside from the fact that we will be studying traffic, but it's not an approval of these, of these cross-sections.
Yeah, certainly, any recommendation on the project description or any direction on the project description does not lock this in. We may find out. I mean, the, this, this is a, again, a conceptual view of what that, what the grand promenade could look like, but as part of environmental review, if, you know, we start looking at circulation infrastructure and it informs us in some way that something on here has to be adjusted, the, the plan will reflect that, right? And, but this is a conceptual view of what it is, and so, if, if, if it works, we would continue to move forward at that. If it needs to be adjusted, it can be adjusted, and if the planning commission or the city council decide to adjust it, that also can work too.
Yeah, I was just wondering if this is part of what we're recommending to city council is like this conceptual street layout? If it was, you know, I'd have my comments, I'd be like twelve-foot lanes, that's what we use on freeways and et cetera, et cetera, but...
And in response to that, certainly, it is, it is valuable input from a specific plan standpoint because the specific plan has these standards on the cross-sections. So, if the commission as a whole has input on any element of the cross-sections, we, that's valuable input and we're happy to take it.
Okay. Save a little bit of time on discussing street layouts. I'll just say to Public Works, it'd be nice for the Active Transportation Committee to take a look at this and save some time. Speaking of other committees and commissions, just generally, be nice for other commissions and committees to just be presented on it, receive some comments from them as well. Parks Commission, certainly, we have open space in here. I believe Arts Commission, not officially, but someone from the Arts Commission has sent in their comments, which, good comments. I don't know, Fairview Park Committee, Fairview Park's nearby, maybe they want to give a quick comment. Just, they, they're, they, they've signed up to go to their own committee meetings. It'd be nice to get some feedback from everyone who is already involved in our city. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Commissioner Andrade?
Will this EIR also influence who the developer will be for DDS?
No, the environmental review will just study what's on the project description and the, the, I think one of the main purposes of the environmental review, again, is to inform decision-makers, inform the city of Costa Mesa, inform the community. But it also identifies environmental impacts that have to be mitigated, and mitigation measures, you know, sometimes you, you, you may have to build something or design something, you know, I mean, a prime example is like storm water retention basin to handle inadequate storm drainage, and that comes at a cost. And so, the mitigation measures from the environmental review will inform any future potential master developer that might be interested, but it does not otherwise, you know, create a selection process or any narrowing process or anything like that.
Okay.
Sure.
So, could you walk me through, I'm, I'm looking at Exhibit A, so it's like page sixty-six of the staff report, in the residential, in the development minimums, maximum, I see there that the five, for example, the five seventy-five units in very low income, you state that it includes the housing developed by DDS. So, can you just explain that to me? So, if this study does, will not influence what's happening with DDS, then why are we counting the housing that DDS is building in our account, am I understanding?
I apologize. I apolog, I, I may have misunderstood your question, I apologize. So, it, I'm sorry, it's DGS, Department of General Services, that selects the master developer, and I thought that was what you meant. So, let me clarify, on the Department of Developmental Services supportive housing, they have a proposal to retain fifteen acres of the ninety-five. Is that right?
Right, and that's the little peach color, right?
Yeah.
That is correct.
Okay, fifteen acres of the ninety-five acres to develop two hundred units of supportive housing, and so that is part of the boundary of the specific plan for, but for that fifteen-acre portion, we know it's DDS and we know it's two hundred units of supportive housing.
I'm going to make a minor correction to that. So, DDS also operates Harbor Village adjacent to this project site. You might be familiar with their model, they have what they call a reverse integration model, it's an eighty-twenty mix. So, twenty percent of their units are available to what DDS calls their clients, their developmentally-disabled persons, and then the rest are eighty percent moderate-income units which are available to the general public. And so, that is what DDS is intending to provide at their property. Those units, it ends up being about ninety-six units, count towards the two hundred supportive and permanent, permanent and supportive housing units, that's called for in the legislation which allowed for the redevelopment of the Fairview site. The master developer will be on the hook for the remainder of those units. And I might have some of my numbers backwards there, I'm sorry, I'm citing them off the top of my head, but that is the, that, there's, you know, that's how all of that breakdown would work.
So, would it make sense to maybe separate those numbers, right? The housing that DDS is providing as opposed to what's directly impact, what we really want to see as the city being able to move forward with?
Certainly, for clarification purposes, we could do that. For purposes of SEQA, it's all a part of the same project. So, this is good feedback for us going forward to make some of these clarifications for everyone and we will, I...
Only because my, my concern is right because we're saying, wow, we're going to provide nine hundred and twenty units of very low and low income when actually it's slightly less because DDS is handling its own, I'm sure, application process or client-based population?
Correct, and we don't know exactly how DDS will go about doing that. There is a potential that they could ask whoever is selected as the master developer to do that, and Karen, sorry if you were trying to chime in something else. So, you know, the, some of this is speculation and we're obviously working in partnership with them and trying to understand what they're doing. Right now, their priority is their complex needs housing project that's moving forward, which is, you know, nestled within Harbor Village and no longer a part of this project.
I, I just wanted to clarify, everything that they're going to be doing counts towards your arena.
Okay, um, so, but we'll, but there's no way, at this point, there's no way of saying that us as a city will be able to house Costa Mesa residents. The, you know, we have this letter of the Affordable Housing Coalition, the eleven, some, some of the families in this eleven thousand that fall into very low and low income, we, we have no idea like where that population is going to come from, is it going to be Costa Mesa residents, is it going to be out, people from outside? Like, are we going to, right, I just want to make sure that these numbers are specifically to serve Costa Mesa residents. Is there a way at this point to?
No, unfortunately, yeah, there, there's no way for us to govern, tell, determine who the future residents are other than from an income level and possibly specific needs standpoint that we know DDS, it's the criteria that we know DDS will be using, but, you know, there's no way for us to otherwise specifically tell. And I'll also say that for the purposes of environmental review, all units, affordable or not, are analyzed as a unit, they're all just units, they don't differentiate.
Okay, so, I think that's what makes me, you know, it makes, my inquiry then leads me to, then if we know that some of these units are not going to be governed by this project, is there an opportunity to increase the number of very low and low income? Because there's already a four hundred and sixty unit gap between what you're making for, developing for moderate and above moderate income, right? As, as you said, right, when you started off your presentation, the, our city is having a struggle with meeting the arena requirements, we're already anticipating that fifteen percent buffer that we're not going to meet, this is a opportunity site to help us meet those requirements. Every other project that we see is for above moderate and above moderate income. So, understanding that some of the units that you're, we're accounting for here in very low and low income are DDS units, it, what is their opportunity to then increase the number so that we do have greater affordability in our city?
I'm trying to think of a, a, a brief way to answer this question. You know, the, the units developed by DDS are, you know, they're going to be governed by DDS, but any other affordable units that are in the specific plan and constructed by a to-be-determined developer, it, we can't tell now how, or who, who is, who are going to be those occupants either, for example. And so, I would say that the DDS units that we're concerned with about, you know, what level of existing Costa Mesa residents are going to be eligible for that, it's the same concern with any other possible affordable housing project because through the specific plan, we just, we are able to govern land use regulations from, you know, it's development standards, it's open space, it's, it's land use intensity, but specific plans are not able to get into things like tenant selection and, and those are, there, those have fair housing implications and, you know, we would have to wait to see what type of affordable housing is constructed and perhaps it has fun, that project has funding that may lead tenants, you know, it may lead to certain tenants of certain qualifying criteria. So, it's very hard for us to tell right now at this point on any future affordable housing project who will be able to live there. And so, what I'm saying is whether it's DDS or another future affordable housing developer, the specific plan does not have the power to govern who the actual end tenant is going to be.
So, what would you, what is, what opportunity would there be then to increase the number of very low and low income available here?
From a...
For the study, right?
Yeah.
Because you're saying it's just for a study, see how it lays out?
Right, but from an environmental review point, they're the same. They're all the same, affordable units, market rate units, they're the same because they're all environmental impacts. So, it's how much noise might it create, how much water might it use, how much, you know? So, they're all the, there's no, there's no, there's no difference in the way you analyze environmentally market rate unit versus affordable unit, correct?
So, so then why set the maximum of three thousand units, three thousand eight hundred?
So, the thirty-eight hundred unit maximum comes out of a variety, a, a, a series of different indicators that we have. You know, the, I think financial feasibility study was one of the more eye-opening ones to know that an ultimate development max of twenty-three hundred was not financially feasible without some huge subsidy of some sort. But thirty-eight hundred hits right where a mass, a developer today using, you know, traditional funding sources would have to have an industry rate of return before they would be willing to develop. And if it's not financially feasible, it's not, it's not going to be developed, and that's, that's the key. And so, if that's reasonably expected to be developed, we want to study that to determine what public services and infrastructure is needed so that we can then build all that in the specific plan and require it should that development range happen. So, that's why the thirty-eight hundred, but something that's not financially feasible, you know, it, if, if it likely, if, if it's likely too low to be financially feasible, we know we're not planning for more, and then, and so, so that's why we're putting that as the maximum, and then the ultimate specific plan maximum could be anywhere in between.
Okay. I, I appreciate that and, and I think it's, it's going with the assumption that thirty-eight is the, is the maximum threshold that a developer would partake in. Okay, so I think it's just something to kind of keep in mind for, for future conversations is, again, just exploring as we move the project forward, not just for the review, right, to increase the number of very low and low income numbers. You mentioned, I don't know if this, if this, you mentioned in the community resources, et cetera, the opportunity for schools, and I, I don't know if you have an update since the last time we reviewed this on connecting with the new Primessa School District on, right, isn't there sufficient capacity for what we're projecting in the surrounding schools?
Yes, so in a prior meeting, you know, we talked about having our initial conversation with the school district where they did indicate that there is capacity at all levels. So, starting the environmental process would be the official way to reach out to them and begin to get their comments early on for us to consider. So, if anything changes long...
Numbers for them to react to?
Yes, now they'll have numbers to react to.
Got it, got it.
But schools could also be different kinds of schools and included in the commercial areas, smaller schools, for example, and daycare, so...
Great, great. Is there an opportunity, I know, you know, thank you for bringing up Harbor Frontage as a parallel opportunity because that's definitely something that is of great interest of my local constituents, right? There is a lack of green space in our community or accessibility, walking accessibility to parks. So, having something that is easily accessible from a highly-traffic area, I live on this intersection, so I can tell you there is pedestrian move all day long, all times of day, so, providing access and too frequently watching this like slow walking migration of youth trying to get to the skate park, everything that's available to the community on the east side, really, really, I would say, highlights the need and the, and the hope that, that city council hopefully seriously considers Harbor Frontage. But along that is, any conversation, should, do we need to include a conversation or possibility of having a access roadway from the Shelley Circle Trail? I know that there is a, there's a road that leads to the fire station, I imagine that might be accessible for emergencies, but again, as we're talking about accessibility to schools, it would be great if this community has, instead of having to wrap all around Harbor or the other way around, cut through the back of the, this FTC to get to, say, Estancia or Wilson Elementary out, out into Placentia. Could we include that in, as part of the, the review? What would that look like and all that?
That is something that we could study through the EIR and would continue to take feedback from, you know, the decision-makers if that would be desired to move forward.
feedback from, you know, the decision-makers, if that would be desired to move forward. I'll offer, I'll, I'll also offer that it was something, a connection that was studied for the EOC, while it would not have been a pedestrian connection, it was something, some, a type of secondary access point they had looked at at, at one point as well.
Oh, fantastic. Yeah, if, like, maybe, I don't know, two-way car lane, and definitely bike and pedestrian, maybe one of these pretty ideas that you have for that second street. And then, yes, I, I would definitely would echo the comments of Commissioner Martinez, and regarding, you know, I'd really had an opportunity to sit through an Arts Commission meeting, and it's really great to hear all the work that's doing, and having previously sat through parks, um, right, like, any great organization, we're working in a little bit of silos, right? And, but that happens, I understand, public, private, no matter where you are, silos exist. So really gathering their insight, they're the experts in this space, so definitely including arts, um, in this conversation for the community center, there's clearly a need of arts, you know, when we talk about, um, again, resources that the west side of Costa Mesa needs, exposure and engaging our youth is absolutely critical. We all want to see improvements in public safety, and reduction in gangs, participation and all of that, so you start early. You start engaging your youth and your children early in activities that don't let them be predatory to any bad nonsense that may be happening in our streets. So that, I think it's absolutely critical to truly engage in a, a meaningful community center, engage parks, and ensuring that green space is hopefully brought at a better ratio for the west side of Costa Mesa, again, families, again, moms and strollers shouldn't have to, um, to, you know, run through Harbor to try to get to Wilson as the nearest, or, like myself, I would travel all the way to Lindbergh, just because I wanted a little more space, but that requires an extra couple of mileage on your stroller wheels. So, um, I think that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dixon?
Thanks so much. So, a couple of questions regarding the outside boundaries of this environmental review. Why are we not analyzing, using Meramec as an alternative traffic lane, as opposed to just a fire access? Can we add, because we should, I think we should analyze every possible existing route.
So, uh, we have learned along the way through this process that Meramec is a private road.
Okay.
And, um, it will be allowed for emergency purposes, used for emergency purposes.
And then... So, there's been a... The financial feasibility analysis has been held up as the motivator for all of these estimates of units, and now we're looking at, you know, I agree with examining the outside limit of units from an environmental perspective. The problem is, is that the EIR, in that analysis, will have to come up with mitigation measures. And so now we're not talking about mitigation measures for 2,500 units, we're talking about mitigation measures for 5,000 units, or 6,000, or however many we decide. Those could be further cost prohibitive, and those could further influence the ultimate development from, uh, you know, a master builder, or whoever. And, so I think, I, this is an environmental review, but the mitigation measures are a major component of that. Those are very specific on how to mitigate those anticipated significant impacts. So, I, I do agree that we need flexibility, but too much flexibility is a problem. So, so I think that we should, we need to pin down, or at least for the City Council's analysis, exactly, like, if a developer walked in with a, an ultimate specific plan that said 2,500 units, or 3,800 units, or whatever number the City Council comes up with, we would need to understand exactly what the maximum possible under every density bonus law scenario is, at that point, because we're not, we're not having a specific plan that says 2,500 units, we're having a specific plan that says that's an aspirational goal, but it could be 7,000, depending on, that's an exaggeration. But, in this discussion this evening, we've heard that the density bonus law could take whatever numbers we come up with and just throw it out the window, depending on whatever incentives there are, depending on whatever credits there may be. So I think it's important for the residents, and for the City Council, and for us, to understand exactly what that may be under the specific scenarios, right? Because I know EIR has come up with alternatives, right? And so, I just want to make sure that we're not too loosey-goosey, and that we're, we're understanding exactly what the potential is, because we can't even analyze it. If we analyze for 5,000, and then under the density bonus law, they come back and say, well, we get an extra 1,800, well then, our EIR is out the window. We have to do, we have to recirculate subsequent supplemental, whatever. So I, I just think that, as part of this entire, what we're deciding we're going to review process, and what we're presenting to the councils in recommendation, we have a, we have a much firmer grip on the numbers. And so, 3,800 sounds great, but then, I also read in the staff report, well, let's analyze 4,000. But, well, maybe I read that somewhere else, but it's a potential of reading of, of up to 4,000, for the analysis of the environmental review, okay? And so I just, I just wanted to point out the correlation between the mitigation measures, because those are extraordinarily expensive, and as you noted earlier, that could be detention evasion, it could be any number of things. It could be building a bridge over Harbor, it could be, you know, a four-lane ingress and agress if the fire department says so, or the state has a Caltrans, or whatever, right? So, I, I, I'm uncomfortable with just throwing darts at the wall of numbers, if we don't really know what those numbers mean in the long run, because we could be taking us out of the price with the mitigation measures if we're analyzing too much. But, so there's that point. And then, I'd also like to better understand, and, and I really appreciate your email to Director Thai earlier, but I, I think it's important to, you know, there's a lot of numbers that have been thrown around, there's a lot of plans that have been thrown around, there's a lot of references that have been flown around. So for instance, for RENA purposes, this parcel is what, 2,300? That's how much we're getting credit from it for RENA? Or is it, I'm, I'm just asking, I, I've heard different things.
Yes, it is 2,300 in the housing element sites inventory, and then you get credit for what you, what you build, but for the capacity, yes, it's 2,300.
Ultimately, okay. Right, right. So, there's that, and then, you know, I, I work, I'm not a lawyer, but I've been doing legal stuff for a long time, and when I see a code section that says shall, I mean shall, it's not aspirational, it's not guidance, it's shall. So, C4, 14670.31, Government Code C4, and I, I had it, but my screen keeps going off, states that the agreement shall require that housing be a priority, and by the way, what is a priority from the state's perspective? Is it 20% in the 80/20 example we were talking about? Is it 50%? Is it 40%? Or is our 40% number even in line with what they consider a priority? Because the legislation is, is prescript, it states that housing to be a priority in the planning process, and that any housing proposal determined to be appropriate for the property shall include affordable housing. The agreement and development plan shall provide for housing and affordable housing at a level consistent with the January 2020 council-adopted strategy of 1,500 units, and the housing assessment in the Department of General Services 2021 infrastructure assessment of up to 2,500 units for the site, shall up to, these are limits in legislation. So, I think the frustration is that we don't really know, you know, we've been told, based on this financial feasibility analysis, and I read the whole thing, it has assumptions, and it, do we know if, are we getting, there are, so, I'm not going to get into that right now, because that's not part of the environmental analysis, but, I, I just, I want to make sure we're very clear on if we come up with 3,800, because we need to make a profit for developers, above and beyond what the legislation says, above and beyond what we've contemplated at almost every public meeting, when we talked about the Fairview Developmental Center process. I don't think the public necessarily understands that Fairview Developmental Center could potentially, that 2,300 was a minimum. I thought people were, you know, but I've heard, what I've been told, and what I've heard from people I've talked to. So my long-winded point here is, we have a whole bunch of numbers, and the one that's driving everything is a financial feasibility analysis that is filled with assumptions, and which we don't even know is going to reflect what actually happens. And so, you know, we, we got rid of it, we were potentially going to go with Concept 3, because Concept 2 was like 4% below the, or a couple million dollars below the, the 15%. So I think before the council gets, I, I know we have to make a recommendation, and I think it's good to make an outside recommendation, but I want to be conservative with that, so we don't kill it with mitigation measures. But, I don't feel comfortable, and I don't know why we're deferring to ancillary issues in the state legislation and ignoring the shals. And, and I have, I have, I'm uncomfortable with that. So I was hoping that you could provide a little bit more color, or maybe Tarkwin, whoever, is how we get away from the shals. I don't see any flexibility in there for coming up with something that's double what it says, the development plan shall up to 2,500. So, um, there's that. So I'll let you, I'm sorry, Alan, stop.
Sure. And, yeah, Thiano, thank you for that. I, I, you know, we, we, we put in our best effort at trying to understand, you know, what was behind legislation, which is, I think we all know is often not as transparent as we'd like. I mean, I, I, we, we saw obviously that, you know, C4, I'll just read it, I mean, for the members of the public that don't have it, "The agreement shall require that housing be a priority in the planning process, and that any housing proposal determined to be appropriate for the property shall include affordable housing." The agreement, the agreement and the development plan shall provide for housing and affordable housing at a level consistent with the January 2020 council-adopted strategy of 1,500 units, and it was council with a small c even, so that took us a while to dig into to figure out whose council it was. And the housing assessment in the Department of General Services 2021 infrastructure assessment of up to 2,500 units for the site. So, actually, Melinda here did a fair amount of digging, and, um, we, so, we, we, we did take a look at that legislation, we did identify that, yes, indeed, it was the Costa Mesa City Council that had the adopted strategy of 1,500 units, however, that was later superseded by the City Council's adoption of the housing element with 2,300 units as a minimum. And, you know, and, and, and then the California Department of General Services Infrastructure Assessment, um, studied a u, a development range from a certain assumption of trip counts, namely 12,000 ADT, average daily trips. The, it, it, the numbers to us were essentially, I mean, we can't trace them back to any origin, I will just, short answer, say that. But what we do know is that, just using a 2,500 number that we cannot trace to an origin, the report already can, the DGS report, which, do you know how many pages that thing is? It was over 300. Four, close to 400-page report, um, that concluded that redevelopment would be costly due to existing conditions, and that included, to deal with the existing infrastructure, whether it was a complete replacement or significant upgrades. The utility network does not meet development standards for any desirable residential community, and then the costs of the development review process, environmental analysis, storm drain, existing traffic network constraints, would, that might limit the density and intensity of redevelopment, and constrain the property. So all of those are, all of those are, were identified limitations in this DGS infrastructure report, and that, that was before the hazardous material abatement costs estimated at $11 million, and that was five years ago, for example. And all of these led to this agreement, that, this, you know, this legislation, C4 indicates that this agreement needs to carry out a certain level of development. This agreement that then later came of the following year, which then required this financial feasibility obligation, so that staff could, or the city and the state collectively could identify a development range that actually was financially feasible. So our best guess in reviewing this Department of General Services report is that all of these identifying, identifying factors being a limitation of, to development, gave DGS enough concern that they included the requirement for the financial feasibility study in our agreement, so that we would prepare one, and then be able to at least realistically determine what would be financially feasible to a developer, and then indirectly, what actually is built. Market decisions are based on financial feasibility, if they're, I'm just going to say this, if they're not financially feasible, they won't be constructed, it won't be built. And so, the state wanted to be informed on, given all of this that we know, what will be financially feasible, and that was the product of that financial feasibility study that is now informing the maximum level of dwelling units we would, we would, we were proposing to have the Planning Commission provide direction on us to study, on the environmental review.
Great, they, thank you, I appreciate that. And so, i, if we come, if we say 3,800 for the purpose of tonight, how would we be able to determine, again, back to my question about the density bonus law? Because I want to make sure we're actually analyzing what the potential is. And so, um, if, let's say it's 4,000, and they decide that, the City Council, after reviewing everything, and coming up to its own independent judgment, and all this stuff new and de novo, they decide it's 2,500, or 3,200, or 1,700, or whatever, as long as it's within that envelope, we're okay, provided, and they might have to revise the mitigation measures.
Yeah, thank you. And your point, Commissioner Dixon, about overmitigating is a valid one, we had those discussions internally as well, you cannot study the sky. If you study the sky, the mitigation measures become so onerous, and they don't correlate anymore to any realistic development range, which means, again, we used, we used what was, what was, was possible at our disposal, which was the findings of the financial feasibility to study, financial feasibility study, to say, what would a developer with traditional financing options likely enter into at 15%? We didn't go higher. Originally, that 4,000-unit count corresponded to a 16.7 internal rate of return, and we said, well, you know, if 15 is the industry standard, why go 16.7? Which is why we dialed it back. We tried to use as many factors as we could to have the maximum be as low as reasonably, reasonably possible, to prevent overmitigating and any, really, any unrealistic development range. Now, after the specific plan is adopted, you know, and at whatever number, could somebody come back and change that because of economic conditions that have changed at that point in time? Possibly, but at this point, given what we know, 3,800 is our most educated recommendation.
Okay, and we have a whole bunch of unbuilt high-rises in North Costa Mesa that have a 40-year-old EIR, so, maybe an older than that.
Yes, and then also, we, we pay attention to regional market saturation as well, and so, because of state housing policies, there are similar conversations going on in Newport Beach, in Irvine, in Santa Ana, and so everybody around Costa Mesa is also building, and so we pay attention to all the pipeline projects and what's going on simultaneously, which is why a lot of these projects have multi-decade build-out, because it's going to take that long for the market, you know, to essentially, to essentially catch up with developers competing against one another.
Right, okay. And then, and you, you addressed the Commissioner, Commissioner Martinez's question about the cross-sections, those are guidance, and we're, we can provide our comments on, on that sort of things, but that's, that level of specificity is not being approved or even analyzed, it's just a, a concept.
That's correct.
Moving forward, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Martinez, are these absolutely vital questions at this point? You're hesitating, so I'm gonna...
I can, um...
Our public has been waiting very patiently.
I can ask my questions after public comment.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I am going to open the public hearing at this point, and open public comments. If you'd like to speak, please come to either podium, and if you're on Zoom, use the raise hand option, or if you're joining by phone, star nine. Give me a second, I'll get your mic set up.
I can't answer. You open the public hearing.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Michael Valentine, and the CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Orange County. Really pleased to be here to address you this evening, and I think you have a tremendous opportunity to solve a problem with this project, and to make a significant economic impact as well to your city. And so by creating affordable, and I want to stress, home ownership opportunities, I think it's easy to lean into the rental, but doesn't really solve that problem economically. When families are qualifying for an affordable rent, if they make a little extra money, and they fall outside of that rent, now they have to return to the open market. When you own a home, you can make more money, you're just still paying a mortgage. So keep that in mind, if you can lean into that, that would be great. But the problems here are significant, and I'm, I'm glad to hear so much you care about affordable home. There's a rent challenge right now. There's a rent challenge right now. More than half of our families are cost burden, spending over 35% of their income on rent, and one in five are spending 50% or more. Low-income renters, some spending up to 87% of their income, and that leaves very little for the necessities of life. And it's just, it's not a low-income problem, it's also affecting your workforce. Teachers, first responders, healthcare workers, entry-level professionals. So if the income increases, as I said before, the affordability is not available to those families. Ownership is also a challenge. Sure you're aware, California is not a very affordable state with a necessity to make $232,000 a year and have 20% for a down payment on a median-priced home. And so Cal is even more restrictive, and now we zero in on Orange County. Orange County, you're going to love this, is having 11% affordability. I'm sorry, I think I ran out of time, right? You know, so...
You have a minute.
I have a minute, okay. Homes are at $1.3 million for a median-priced home. That means you've got to make an income of 350 grand to buy that house and have 260 grand down payment. So you really need to invest in affordable home ownership. It'll increase your housing supply, it'll reduce, and we want you to reduce regulatory barriers, and help your workforce get into accessible home ownership. Every dollar spent on those homes is a buck 77 coming back to your community through property taxes, kids attending the schools, shopping increases in there, and a home improvement also increases the investment in the community. So I ask that you ensure that Fairview project includes home ownership in the affordable scale for low and moderate workforce, to see you've got...
Thank you.
All right, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Steve DeZeta. I'm a longtime resident of Costa Mesa, longtime, I guess, 40 years. And in the last period of time, I've seen every year, year by year, our kids and our grandkids being forced out of our city to the Inland Empire, and to Nevada, and to Wyoming, and to South Dakota, so that they could enjoy being able to afford their housing. Similarly, that's true, as the gentleman just said, with our service providers at all kinds of different levels. The Fairview Development Center is perhaps our last and best opportunity to do something big about this. And as you've mentioned several times, this is not down to the weeds of this whole thing, but it's a preliminary thing dealing with the environmental. And my point here is to make it clear that I, and a lot of people in Costa Mesa, hold affordable housing as a high priority in these decisions. This 40% minimum is important to us, and the constituency for this idea is large. And I spent four decades or so representing developers in this process, and one of the things that they are very good at is negotiating the entitlement process to their best advantage. And we need to be just as good as negotiating the entitlement process to our city's best advantage. And what that does not mean is compromising on the question of affordable housing. It's critical to our, it's critical to our city. I would love to be able to have my grandkids play with me on a golf course. I'm a golfer, although my foursome probably would not agree with that. But it doesn't do any good to have a real nice golf course to share with my grandkids if they have to come here from South Dakota. And so it's important that we keep our eye on the ball. You folks here on the commission and the city council, keep the eye on the ball that we need to make a big bite into this affordability problem that we have right now. And the people in Costa Mesa that are focused on this idea is a substantial constituency, and we're going to be involved in the rest of this process all the way down to the end. Not going to get it down, not going to get it down to the last jot and tittle right now, but it's important that you understand and that the council understand that this is a high priority, not just an incidental thing, but a high priority for many of the residents here in Costa Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioner. Jay Humphrey, Costa Mesa resident. What he just said, to save time, secondarily, making this specific plan that has no commitment to it is a wonderful thing. Gee whiz, we get to do whatever we want to do in that area, and it just happens that way. Of course, it's a double-edged sword. If we set up a specific plan based on a top number, what might be built there, maybe, why don't we make it 5,500, maybe 6,000? Because if, in fact, we need to have that flexibility and get the EIR done, maybe that's the way to do it. But the problem can be simply that when the plans show up and get here, we don't get what we think. When this first started a number of years ago, my brain remembers that the number was 1,800 to 2,300 housing units on that piece of property. We're now at 4,000, and God knows where it'll be next week. So that's a concern of mine, that an open-ended, specific plan to submit the basis for the study to the EIR has a way of maybe coming back and biting us and determining absolutely that, oh, we got the EIR for this, so we're now going to do that. And if we, in fact, put more on that property, gee whiz, how hard is it to do another EIR? I don't see it's all that hard to do. It certainly is time-consuming, it certainly is money, but where money's to be made, it seems like a lot of people figure out a way to get that done when they want it done. So without any commitments to what's going to happen on that property, I have some concerns. One of the biggest problems I see is that the open space that is now going to be used as part of the EIR, that open space allows 1.2 acres per 1,000 people as open space. We have a goal of 4.26. Why don't we just change the goal? Why don't we just forget it? Just change the goal. Let's be New York City. I think we can do that, because New York City has a ratio of, I think what I read was 1.3. See, we can do that, 1.2, 1.3, it's right there, and that's a concern of mine. Secondarily, I can drive right now to Fairview Developmental Center off of Mesa Verde East. I don't know why we have problems getting there, because that road exists, the passage on it exists.
All right, thank you. Give me one second. All right, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm John Henson, and I've been a resident of Costa Mesa since 1988. After listening to the staff report tonight, I've come to realize that this process is a lot further down the road than I had realized before I came in the door tonight. And honestly, I'm not used to coming up before the Planning Commission, so I've just been listening to bits and pieces prior to tonight to come to my conclusions. So let me just share just a couple of things. There was actually a couple of other points I wanted to make, but again, I think at this point, they're moot. Number one, my one big concern that I have is traffic. I had done some research on the internet based on the assumption of what traffic would be like if we had 2,300 units and 3,800 units on Harbor Boulevard. And based on that research, the numbers that I come up with, if we had 2,300 new housing units, it suggests that there could be an additional 18,000 car trips a day in that stretch of Harbor Boulevard. If you bump it up to 3,800, you're talking about potentially another 30,000 car trips a day. That would be an absolute disaster on Harbor Boulevard, and the quality of life would really go down. Secondly, I'm a golfer, and I really don't want to see any disruption to the golf course itself. I think it's a crown jewel within this city. One of the local golf professionals told me that there's an average of 600 rounds of golf per day played at the Costa Mesa Golf Course. That's over 210,000 rounds of golf per year. That brings in a lot of money to the city and a lot of joy to people that play golf, especially as we witness a number of golf courses shrinking in Orange County itself. And my last point is really kind of moot, but I'm just going to throw it out at this point anyways. And I say it's moot simply because I realized in listening to the staff that it's almost inevitable that there is going to be housing put in the project. But ideally, what I'd love to see is a sports complex put in there for the kids, because I think that that would really benefit the use of Costa Mesa. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Yeah, Robert Abbott, Costa Mesa resident. So I attended two of the visioning sessions last year, and we talked about the 2,300 number. And samples that were handed out to support the 23, and get an idea of visually what a 2,300 number would look like, the presenters provided two samples. One was on Lincoln Boulevard, just southeast of Marina Del Rey. It's a nice, nice project. The other one was an Irvine project. They were both of the density that would land at about 2,300. So it made sense, at least at the visioning session. So I'm curious, when we upscale the project to 3,800 based on financial feasibility beyond what you see in those kinds of projects, when I hear feasibility, I think price, at what price? So it sounds like the state, I don't know what the structure of the transaction is, is the state transferring the property to the city or to a master developer and at some price? But it sounds that is the case, that the state is expecting some price for the land. And to achieve that price, then we've got to get to the 3,800 number. I may be wrong, but it sounds, when you say feasibility to me, that's what I hear. And so maybe the state is expecting too much in their pricing assumptions. So I'm curious about the structure of the transaction. And then lastly is the DDS. That didn't come up in the visioning session. It's probably my fault that I'm out of date. I didn't look at this package, so. But in the visioning session last year, we didn't have the DDS piece. So I'm just curious what the state's guidelines are for that portion of the project. Don't know. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Maria DeZeta, married to Steve, who spoke earlier. I understand, as Commissioner Harlan pointed out, that your task tonight is a very narrow one. Nevertheless, going forward, I think it's important to put my plea out there in the moral universe. When Steve and I bought our house here in Costa Mesa 40 years ago, in Mesa Verde, we were very fortunate to have paid 1/10th of what our house would sell for today. Of the last 40 years, for 35 years, I have been running a program in our neighboring city of Santa Ana, working with hundreds of working poor families. And that has provided me the opportunity to see firsthand what the lack of affordable housing in a city does to its residents. Our families work two, three jobs, desperately trying to pay the rent and put food on the table. Playing golf is not part of their lifestyle. They often have to bring in additional people to share the rent with them. They often go hungry. We know here in our city of Costa Mesa that 40% of our residents are either low or very low income. The availability of the Fairview property gives our city a wonderful opportunity to see justice served, to make as many of those units as possible, as hopefully 40% of those units available for low and very low-income families, and change their lives in extraordinarily important ways. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Kathy Espahani with the Costa Mesa Affordable Housing Coalition. You know, we've been advocating for many, many years for affordable housing in our town, and we always come away disappointed. But Fairview Developmental Center holds tremendous possibility for us to finally start meeting the tremendous need in our city. Maria DeZeta just used the words, bringing a moral dimension to this. And I think it's really important to remember the importance of housing for families. You know, the lack of affordable housing has a tremendous impact on families. There's a lot of stress on parents when they are just barely making rent, and then there's an emergency in the family that stresses the budget, and they're on the verge of eviction. There is overcrowding in homes because the cost of housing is so high that families have to share space, which can be very difficult for children to prepare for school. You know, someone just mentioned, Maria actually just mentioned, the numbers in Costa Mesa, 47% of Costa Mesa households are lower income. They're either low or very low. And 29%, almost a third of Costa Mesa households are very low income, which means a family of four makes less than $42,700 a year. That's 11,842 Costa Mesa families. The average rent in Costa Mesa today for a two-bedroom is $2,900, $2,934 a month. But a very low-income family can only afford a monthly housing cost of $1,600 a month. And so the gap between what they can afford and the price they have to pay to stay housed is incredibly stressful for people. So this is your chance to support the higher density that is, that obviously developers need higher density for this to pencil out. Families in Costa Mesa need higher density so that they can get the homes they need. So I urge you to make the 40% requirement apply to whatever number, whether it's 2,300 or, I hope, 3,800 apartments. Make that 40% low and very low applicable to that, the entire number of units built. And you will be going far towards meeting the need in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go ahead, Ms. Russell.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Diane Russell. And first, I want to express my appreciation to the staff for all the work that has gone into gathering input and creating this report, and to the Commissioners who have listened to the community input and studied this plan. It has not been a smooth process, and there's many things that could have been done differently and perhaps better. There are a number of competing visions for this land, and it's a challenge to put the pieces together and create a plan that most people won't hate. I'm encouraging to pass the resolutions and move this process forward. For me, as I look at our city, I know we have a jobs-housing imbalance. We like to bring in new businesses into the city, but we've been less than enthusiastic about providing housing for the workers. And then we complain about the traffic from the people that are driving into the city to go to work. All of this is to say that we need a plan for the maximum amount of housing units, providing the amenities that will benefit new residents and have a positive impact on other residents. With good design, this is possible. I'm not a developer or an architect, so I can't tell you how to do this, but a development team that understands our vision can. The housing element calls for 2,300 units with 40% of these to be low and very low. I'm concurring with the letter sent on behalf of the Costa Mesa Affordable Housing Coalition that encourages the master developer to create a design for 20, or 30... that encourages the master developer to create a design for 3,800 units with 40% affordability for low and very low-income families. More and more people are working from home. People use various forms of transportation, and those are changing. The city needs to plan not for what is, but what people will want in five or 10 years or even farther into the future. Plan with flexibility. People want a place to live. They want open green space, and they want a place to grab a cup of coffee or get some milk and have access to nearby and easily accessible services. This is an opportunity to do this in the heart of our city. I encourage you to approve this and move it forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Kirk Bowermeister, and I'm an old retired guy. Came tonight not knowing really what you guys were doing, but then when I read what was in the brochure you had out front, it made it clear to me. Adopting a resolution to recommend to the City Council a scope of environmental study in the form of a draft preferred land use plan for the Fairview Developmental Center. Having worked for the district for a long time, we built pools, and we built stadiums, and we built theaters. So I've been through this process, and I understand tonight what you're doing is you're setting what we would call the navigational buoys. And we looked at tonight 2,300 to 3,800 homes, a minimum of 12 acres of open space, 3,500 square feet of mixed-use commercial, a number of other things. One of the things that did my heart well is I see in here that the golf course redesign is a part of it. And I did look at that, and it looks like that land on the east side over there towards Harbor Boulevard would obviously be a prime place. If we could use the land on the other side, that would put more holes on the golf court side. That would kind of make sense, too. I know this is stuff for further on down the line. But as we get further on down the line, and as we have set those navigational buoys, and we know what we're doing with this property a little bit more, I would encourage you to have a town hall-style meeting. These are things that we did in the district as well. When you get to an idea of what you really kind of want to do with that property and what the options are, you get out in front of the community, you tell them what they are, and you listen like you're listening tonight. And sometimes what you hear is, this is a great project, move forward. And sometimes you hear some really good ideas from people in the community of things that you would want to implement and have in that project. So again, I would just say, as we move forward, make sure that you keep the public, that you keep all of these people included in this, and you'll have a much better project. And again, I think you're on the right track. This could be a great project for the city. Again, affordability of housing, the golf course, fields for kids, there's a lot of really good elements of this project. So I applaud your efforts, and we're always available to help.
Thank you.
Hello, City Council. Thanks to the planning guys for a nice presentation. So I'm a golfer, and I talked last in the August meeting about worries about change in the golf course. I'm still worried about that. I'm glad to see that there's been some concept of a plan for the change of the golf course. I'm hoping that plan goes to the City Council. If that plan is just still a plan, then I don't know how you can do an environmental assessment without looking at what they're going to do to change the golf course. Hopefully, that plan or whatever the kernel of a plan is, is going to go in the documents that go to the City Council. That's the one thing. The other thing was the land swap idea. Chair brought it up, and it was discussed that that was going to have to be a separate concept, a whole different thing. I think if that doesn't happen in parallel, then, you know, you're not sort of, I really think if you just get rid of the golf course along Harbor and move everything over to there, that seems to, you know, get rid of some of the problems where the community is isolated. It puts it out onto Harbor. Seems like a good plan. And if you're not thinking about it or having, if that plan hasn't been fleshed out at all, then it's a lost opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Long night. Hi, I'm Tim B. Allen. Thanks for giving me a few minutes. I've been a resident since '84. The map, that bike trail or the walking trail, Danager's ends at the entrance to the golf course. So I just hope we're getting the facts, we're getting the, you know, whatever's going to happen is going to be good for everybody. But we're not Irvine, we're not Santa Ana, we're not New York. Irvine's got three times the people that we do, over 300,000. They've got 42,000 acres, four times bigger than we are. That's about eight people per acre. Costa Mesa, you drill down, we got about 125,000 people. You got a little over 10,000 acres. You're right at that 12 to 13 people per acre. Why would you put a building with 3,800 and 20,000 cars? You're putting over 100 people per acre in that small section. And I just think the quality of life, the impact from the traffic. I like affordable housing, but when I stayed in the last meeting, I couldn't afford to live here when I bought, and I worked my tail off, and now I own it. So good for me. But at some point, you just got to step back and say, hey, we are Costa Mesa, and what is it that we really do want? And I don't want to spend another 30 minutes on Harbor Boulevard just going to Triangle Square to use a gym. We got enough traffic, we got enough high density. I just, I hope common sense, you know, weighs in on this whole process, and you guys do what you do, but hopefully you keep listening to us. So thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else in chambers that'd like to speak? Okay, Anna, do we have anybody on Zoom or phone?
Jimmy Elrod, you may provide your public comment.
Yeah, good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Jimmy Elrod, and I speak tonight on behalf of the Carpenters Union. We appreciate the work the city and the Planning Commission are doing to gather community input and thoughtfully plan the future of this important property. As you consider moving forward with a draft preferred land use plan, we would like to emphasize the importance of including labor standards in any development agreements that might come about from it. Whatever gets built here, whether it's housing, commercial space, or mix, the jobs created should be good, middle-class jobs for local workers. We urge the city to ensure that this project requires contractors and subcontractors to utilize a local skilled and trained workforce and comply with apprenticeship standards. Doing so will not only support working families in Costa Mesa, but also guarantee high-quality construction and on-time delivery for the city and its residents. This land is a once-in-a-generation opportunity. Let's make sure it benefits the entire community, not just with new buildings, but with good careers and fair standards for the people who build them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Cynthia McDonald, you may provide your public comment.
Good evening again, Cynthia McDonald, Costa Mesa resident. First, the term preferred option reflects the state of California's preference, not that of the community. Public feedback at the last meeting clearly indicated a lack of support for this option, so it should be renamed to reflect that reality. I'm concerned about forwarding this plan to the City Council in its current form. It lacks critical detail. While we have targets for total and affordable housing units, there's no breakdown of unit types, studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, et cetera, and how they'll be distributed. Without this information, especially regarding the placement of the affordable units, e.g. whether they're going to be concentrated in the 12-story buildings or next to the EOC, I cannot assess whether the plan truly benefits the residents. This project was supposed to get its own IHO, and those details need to be disclosed now. The resolution also vaguely mentions a range of senior living options. What does that entail? Similarité? While daycare is listed as a permitted use, it was one of the most supported amenities during public outreach. Why isn't it being required as a community benefit? I've advocated for discounted daycare for city employees as the city of Los Angeles does. Pedestrian access to Fairview Park is mentioned, but not defined. Where is it located and what does it consist of? Open space and street design also need clearer definitions. Whatever the projected traffic volumes are, they aren't disclosed. The proposed street grid largely consists of dead ends. To ensure pedestrian and cyclist safety, traffic speeds must be reduced, so narrow streets would help achieve this. Finally, the proposal is too vague to support a SEQA document. What I'm seeing isn't enough MPO to prepare an NOP. The city risks legal challenges by providing developer flexibility over specificity. Let me remind you of the judge's criticism of the Sonoma Developmental Center specific plans EIR, which was deemed vague, open-ended, and devoid of any clear mandatory requirements or performance standards. Sonoma County is now having to revise that EIR. Let's not repeat their costly mistake. This unpreferred option needs to be fleshed out and more detail provided to the public so we can formulate sensible comments before you send it to the City Council. And I agree with Mr. Dixon's assessment that the mitigation measures need to be determined now. We already know that land is dirty on part of the project area and will require a lot of mitigation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caesar, you may provide your public comment.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Caesar Coarubias, Executive Director of the Kennedy Commission, an organization that works to increase affordable housing opportunities in Orange County. I'd like to make sure that we acknowledge that this is the opportunity for Costa Mesa to make true on its commitment, on its commitment to house working families. And by working families, we mean families making $100,000 or less are what's considered low-income, very low-income, and extremely low-income in Orange County. And that's the segment of housing that has not been addressed in a long time in Costa Mesa. And we need to make sure that this development through this EIR is proposing to set the table for development that is going to be inclusive, that it's going to be addressing the critical needs in the city. As mentioned earlier, about 47% of Costa Mesa's are low-income, and that means working families making $100,000 or less. Without the opportunity to purchase a home, they're going to have to rent. And to be able to rent in a competitive market where rents are $3,000 to $4,000 a month, we need to seize this opportunity to be able to ensure that our working families do have stable communities where they can thrive and they will continue to raise their families. In addition, this is an opportunity, housing opportunity site identified in the housing element. If we don't make the true commitment of including at least 40% of the units to be affordable, then the city would be, in all likelihood, trying to find additional land to actually plan for the development of the arena needs. So this is the opportunity. Let's seize it, make sure that the City Council sees a recommendation where affordable housing truly is highlighted, and that we focus on family housing because that's the need that's in the community. So if the EIR needs to be, that needs to be analyzed further, we would encourage staff and the city to do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Linda, you may provide your public comment.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. My name is Linda, and I am part of the Costa Mesa Affordable Housing Coalition. We have been diligently working and advocating for affordable homes in the city for at least two decades, and we have been patiently waiting for an opportunity to build a substantial amount of affordable homes that would not only meet our lower-income Rina goals, but will make a substantial impact on our city's unmet housing needs. Today, we are presented with the best and golden opportunity. Considering the FDC site is identified as a housing opportunity site, and it is a state-owned site, we are urging the commission to take action and support the maximum density to allow 3,800 units for FDC and set aside at least 40% of those units affordable to low and very low-income households. As you've heard from other speakers today, it's no secret that many households in the city are struggling with Orange County's high housing costs. Earlier, there was a comment on affordable home ownership. I understand that home ownership provides benefits, such as equity. However, if we build for-sale homes, we won't be able to impact as many households or families than if we were to build rental homes. The end goal for the city should be to address our affordable housing crisis and to help as many family households as we can. Also, because the FDC site is state-owned, we can leverage this and be more competitive for affordable housing funds for rental versus for-sale homes. While staff is recommending that the city not commit to a specific course of action on the specific plan, I believe at the very least, Costa Mesa should act as quickly as possible to do everything it can to commit to creating opportunities and maximizing the use of state-owned land by developing 3,800 low- and very low-income homes for our residents and workforce. In addition, one of the staff's PowerPoint presentations discussed incorporating feedback on the specific plan, such as allowing community amenity uses for a library or school. Today, we should rethink what the typical community amenity is and identify affordable rents as an important community amenity. In closing, we are more than happy to meet with all of you to discuss our concerns and recommendations. Please don't hesitate to reach out to our coalition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Wendy Leece, you may provide your public comment.
Yes, good evening. I've been listening to most of the discussion this evening. Appreciate all the hard work on the commission's part and on the staff and consultants' part. My takeaway is that there still needs to be a lot of work and a lot more transparency and a lot more discussion in town halls with the community. I've probably gone to, I don't know, in the last three or four years, five different meetings with stickers and giving my opinion, writing my opinion at the senior center, St. John the Baptist. And of course, we had that initial EOC gathering in the auditorium at the FDC. So I've got a few questions. I like what Commissioner Dixon had to say, but who analyzes the profitability statistics? Does the city really go into detail what the developer is presenting or as far as profit and loss on any of the presented, whatever the number of units is decided? I know developers want to make money, and we want to have the best product, but I hope there's scrutiny at that level so that we get the most bang for our buck. What is the estimated population if we go with the 2,300 or the 3,800? And has staff really at this point, because I think it's important, analyzed the impact to everybody's public safety with fire and police in the whole city? How many new police officers and firemen are we going to have to hire, and at what cost? And also, with the education? I liked what the consultant said about it doesn't have to be, you know, a regular school. It could be a smaller school. It could be a charter homeschool, something that could fit in a smaller space. But I think a lot more work has to be done, a lot more transparency. I hope with the NOP that the results or that everybody who comments will have an answer to their comment. I hope that the environmental aspect digging around will find that there's burrowing owls. And also, I think that the effect and the impact of the EOC on the residents and the whole city needs to be analyzed, too. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's no one else, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'm going to close public comment. Commissioners, do we have any questions of staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Martinez.
Okay. To follow up on what Commissioner Andrade was talking about before, with the 200 permanent supportive housing units by DDS. Okay. These permanent supportive housing units, they'd be part of that ratio. These permanent supportive housing units, they'd be part of that ratio of whatever mix they would provide in their 15 acres. Is that like the highest number of permanent supportive housing units they would?
So, not necessarily, but the DDS housing, just to reiterate what was said before, will count towards meeting the city's overall arena and as a part of the project. It's within, you know, our study area and boundary for the project.
Okay.
So...
Let me get to my second part of my question.
Yeah, go ahead.
So they have a ratio that they use, 80/20, 75/25. I don't know what the ratio is. But would it be fair to say that whatever the ratio is, the total number of DDS units would be controlled by the number of permanent supportive housing units? So like, let's say that it's a ratio of 80/20. If they have 200 permanent supportive housing units, would that then mean that they have 800 of the other units?
No. From our understanding with the state, they are intending to continue their model, again, from the Harbor Village adjacent property. And that housing model and how we have it built into what you're seeing here today, what we would be accounting for, for them to be producing or building, is 480 units based on the 15 acres and the housing type that they use. That apartment-style project that, again, would very much mirror what you see in Harbor Village, which they've also conceded to doing actually at a slightly higher density. So we've been talking to them at about 32 dwelling units per acre. But right now, we're looking at somewhere around 480 units would be an expected reasonable development potential for the state. And again, that's in the conversations we've been having.
Okay, so the ratio could be very different from what I'm hearing. Because like 200 to 280?
So there's two separate things here. The legislation requires that 200 permanent supportive housing units are built here on the FDC site. A portion of those will be provided inherently by DDS because those are the clientele that they support. Whatever DDS does not provide will be required, the master developer will be required to provide those units.
Okay. Okay.
And those units qualify within the very low-income category.
Cool. Let's stick with DDS. Harbor Village. Is that theirs? Do they control that currently?
They do. They have a long-term land lease with the Harbor Village operator, but that is state-owned property.
Okay. And our light orange color at the top of our preferred land use plan, that will also be DDS land?
Correct. So that was a previous project called Shannon's Mountain. They used to, they thought they were going to have that on the southern portion of the property. And again, all these discussions and working groups that we've had, they said, you know, it would really be ideal to have it closer to Harbor Village, as you see here, which is more beneficial for the long-term use of the property.
Okay. So, we don't want Merrimack to be in access for the entire property, right? We've said that DDS doesn't want that because it's a private road. Yes. But DDS will now control both Harbor Village and these 15 acres up top. So as part of our study, are we including that they will be able to use their own private road to access their own private part of the development?
They will, they will have the opportunity to use that road as they see fit to service their clients, but it is not a road that will be made publicly available. That is what we've been told, except for emergency access purposes. So fire and police would have a Knox box type of, you know, fob or whatever, you know, signal that they provide that allows them to go through whatever access point they might put up.
Okay, so my point is, not everyone who lives in DDS land here will be exiting out through Fair. It's possible for them to be exiting out through Merrimack. Is that correct?
If they're in that lighter orange-colored DDS housing area. Not sure I could answer that at this point, but I would say potentially. My hesitation is the fact that there is a market component to this, meaning the other 80% of the households that they provide are open to the general public. If, in fact, they build something with the same operator, let's say, and it ends up being a Harbor Village 2.0, it would absolutely make sense. If they end up doing something that falls under the purview of the master developer, and again, I can't speculate on their behalf, I could see a different scenario opening up. So I would hate to tell you that, yeah, that'll solve your traffic problem because those 480 units won't even use that same road. I really don't know. I can't answer that wholeheartedly for you.
Perhaps something good to keep in the back of the head as you move on with discussions?
Yep.
Let's see. Something I don't know about EIRs and mitigations is if, because there will be several alternatives, right? In the ER, there'll be the preferred and then alternative one-two-whatever. Do we say what mitigations would be required under each alternative? Or do we just have a list of mitigation, it's no matter what? So like, at a more intense use, this mitigation applies, but it doesn't, that mitigation doesn't apply to other uses? Is that a thing?
Sort of. I can answer that. So mitigation measures have to relate to an impact. And not only just the impact, but the level of impact. And so depending on what level of impact that alternative triggers, there would be a corresponding mitigation measure. So in a typical environmental impact report, you would find in the alternatives analysis, in a, well, hold on. In a regular EIR, you would find the analysis of the main project description, all of its impacts, its mitigation measures. And then in the alternative, it does a comparison between the alternative and the project description, and it will compare them. For example, if the alternative is a less intense one, there may be certain impacts that are triggered under the proposed project, and I use air quotes, but the proposed project, but that the alternative would not trigger. And if it doesn't trigger that impact, then there would be no corresponding mitigation measure in that particular topical area. Conversely, if you have an alternative that's more intense, it may trigger a higher level of impact in a certain topical area, which then would increase either the amount of mitigation in one form or maybe even add a second form of mitigation. So it does it in a comparison sense. So it all relates to the impact, though. You don't just have mitigation that relates to an alternative. It has to trigger an impact first, then the mitigation.
Okay. So that means that not necessarily, well, if we study a higher-impact alternative, that doesn't necessarily mean that if a lower-impact alternative is developed, that they will be forced to mitigate for what a higher-impact alternative studies?
That is correct.
Okay. Cool. Just a quick, no, I'll skip that. For the conversation we've been having, I think it only just clicked. The EIR is not the specific plan. Okay. And I know that's very basic, but when we, when we say, like, when I was talking about density bonus law and a 3,800 dwelling unit maximum, that doesn't necessarily mean the specific plan is going to say a 3,800 dwelling unit maximum. Okay? So my point in saying that is that now, you know, thinking out loud, studying, for example, a higher, I don't know, commercial square footage, right? If we study that, the specific plan could stick with what we have here, but now we've studied it and now that's, but we, in the specific plan later, we can set that maximum, having studied a higher maximum. I think that makes sense. Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And I wanted to ask about the open space requirements lever and what that meant. Can you explain?
Yes. So on the screen, you will see that the open space would, that, on the project description, it says 12-acre minimum dedicated publicly accessible open space. Now, the general plan formula for open space is 4.26 acres per thousand. And I don't have a calculator in front of me, but the forecasted population range, actually, you know, since one of the public commenters mentioned it, with a reasonably expected dwelling unit range of 2,300 to 38,000, the total population range is somewhere between 5,700 and 9,700 people. So if you think 4.26 acres per thousand, I'm just going to, I mean, that, I'm just using the, let's say, the high end of the range.
Forty-eight.
That's 48 acres?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, forty.
Forty-eight.
Thank you for the math assistance. I appreciate it. So 40 acres versus 12 minimum. So for the purposes of CEQA, open space tends to be the least intense use compared to commercial, even residential. And so for us, for environmental review, it's most conservative to study the lower end because you're going to assume a higher end on actual development. But for the specific plan requirement, we are proposing that we put in the general plan requirement because it is the general plan requirement. And then what the levers are, are, you know, they're incentives. So for example, if there's a, there's an amenity of some sort, and I'm not, you know, I'm not pre-committing anybody to anything, but let's say somebody says, I will, you know, there's an open space requirement, but I will build a building of some sort. I will build a library. That that could potentially decrease the number of acres required. And so there's levers. And in other words, there's a range. But the starting point for the city would be the general plan requirement. We heard that from the public. It was very important. And we want to make sure that when this FDC site is developed, that the city has the most advantageous position when it comes to future open space. So that's why you see the requirement is different from what is being analyzed. What's analyzed is the least because development, like, commercial or residential development is more intense. And we want to take the conservative approach.
Okay. I just ask, since it's in our Exhibit A, the open space levers, just wanted to understand that that would be like, we say you're required to have 40 through our general plan requirements, and then we'll say, oh, if you build a library, if you build a whatever, then you can go down to your 12. Is that roughly?
In some...
Proportionally through, yes, you have a library and an art center, and then you can...
Right. It would be a great, it wouldn't just be a like...
Yeah, just a one or the other.
Yeah, it's a gradient. It's a tier or scale.
Okay. Understood. And those are my questions. Okay, thank you.
You sure? Okay, anyone else? Okay, Vice Chair Zick.
Thanks. I've got just a couple. Could you start with page five of your presentation? Then you can come back to 17. I think this is a good one for a lot of people. This is a ridiculously elementary question. But if I take 3,800 times 2.64, I get 10,032, not 9,704. Can you explain that?
We'll double-check our calculation.
We can double-check.
We have inverted something on the slide.
Yeah.
When I question the math here, it makes me question math elsewhere. Affordable housing, I'm assuming that's going to be deed-restricted, correct?
Correct.
And the duration of the deed restriction is expected to be what?
It's typically minimum 55 years unless there is some other, you know, some other agreement or some other proposal or some funding restriction, but...
And will it be the city managing that or the state managing that?
At this time, it's not known. I mean, the city currently does not have any land involvement. So the city is not ownership to the land, and the city does not have a development authority. So so far as we know, Department of General Services will dispose of the site to a master developer who will then identify an affordable housing developer. And the city will have a party to an affordable housing agreement through a regulatory basis. But the operation, as we saw from the most recently-approved Affordable Housing Senior Project, the operation of that, the tenant selection, will be on the, will be the responsibility of the affordable housing developer or operator that they assign the property to.
Okay. And of the 2,300 units, using that as a number, are 480 of those DDS units?
Yes. Based on the assumption that I described earlier, where we have been working with the state, assuming that they were going to do 32 units per acre on their 15-acre site, that's how we got to that number, yes.
And that would be part of the 2,300?
Correct.
Okay. That's all I've got right now.
Okay. Commissioner Dixon?
I promise not to go on for a long time here. So just, I wanted to get back to really quickly, if any member of staff or consultant team has an idea from either precedent or actual discussions or whatever, what priority of affordable housing is considered if it's looking at a percentage basis? Because I ask because we have so much talk about affordable housing, and this entire legislation is about affordable housing and mixed-use development and all those great things. So this is our opportunity to do it. We're picking 40%, which is, whether or not it's 40% of 3,800 or 40% of 2,300, that pushes the dollar amount through the roof according to the financial feasibility analysis. So are we going to stick with 40%? Is that, the planning commission is going to recommend to the council 40%? I'm assuming if, but what is this, does the state have a standard?
So let's, so the housing element identifies 2,300 units and 40%. That's where the 40% originates from. For the purposes of the EIR, as Carrie stated earlier, a unit is a unit, and they will, and that will be studied in a unit, no matter what the affordability level is.
Perfect.
We will continue to take input and collect feedback based on affordability percentages and targets and whatnot. As it's shown to you on the screen here, with the 575 very-low units, 345 low units, those together in a 3,800 dwelling unit scenario would be approximately 24%. And then if we were to add the moderate units, then we would be reaching our 40% mark. Those are other future conversations we can continue to have as to how we would structure that moving forward. Certainly, it's something we've heard a lot from the public here tonight about, is making sure to maximize that. I'll leave it to Carrie and any further question that you have as far as how to move this forward tonight. But I don't think that that has to be a part of the resolution as far as what that target may be.
Right. And I brought that up because it's in here, it's enumerated. And so I wanted to make sure, as you were saying, it's a unit is a unit, from the purpose of this analysis, this envelope, these buoys, right? And so, okay, so... That's good. I'm good.
Okay. One?
I did have a question wrote down. I put my notes down. I apologize.
Sorry. One quick?
One question. Golf course road. Is it just completely off the table? Because with a potential land swap, if that's considered, we would maybe get an area over there that we could connect. That's our road. It's not a pirate.
For secondary access road, is that what you're saying, cutting through the golf course?
Or even a third? If we, depending on, with it, for purposes of analysis, is it just completely off the table? Have you heard from Public Works or from whoever that that's just a complete non-starter? Or can we analyze it?
I'll let Carrie.
Can I clarify? Commissioner Dixon, are you asking to study a...
Coming off, coming off of Mesa Verde, through, into the parking lot of the golf course, there is a road, I think it, Tanniger is what it turns into?
It's from the Sea Hall lot.
Right?
Yeah, it's right here. It's Golf Course Road. Right.
And that's how I get to the golf course?
Yes.
Of course, drive, sorry.
Yeah.
The question is, we're not analyzing that because we haven't considered that. And I think we talked about it at a prior meeting, but I'm wondering if it's possible to...
I think it's talking about up here. Are you talking about up here, Rob? Northern part?
I thought.
Right here.
Right here.
Yes, this road comes into the golf, the parking lot, there's the driveway, right?
I misread this bad map, I apologize, never mind, disregard.
See, you shouldn't have asked that question.
I thought this was a road.
I tried to, tried to save you.
You did. I thought that thing was a road, sorry. Apologize.
All right, one?
Okay.
I, I will. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try.
So can I clarify, was the question for that to be a potentially pedestrian connection?
The question was wandering off into the wilderness and stumbling around and getting lost.
Commissioner Dixon's going to resent his question.
Okay, thank you, okay, thank you for the clarification.
Okay.
But I did ask about the entryway hitting to Placentia. So, you said yes, we would include it, right, in the study?
We could include it in the recommendation.
Yes, we can, if the commission, if there's consensus on the commission, or at least the majority, we can include that in the recommendation.
Wait a minute.
Because that was, that was the surrounding comment, concerns about all the.
When we, when we get to making a motion, if somebody wants to add something in about any changes to what's going to be studied, we can do that.
But I need a clarification on that, because on page four of the staff report, you say that alternative is infeasible. Now you're saying you're willing to study it? Because if you are, I'd like to see Meramec studied again. I'm sure the Lance Watt people would like to see that.
What is, what is not feasible?
Second paragraph on top of page four.
Of secondary access points.
Which is what she's referring to.
Commissioner Andrade, you're referring to the road across from Placentia to the property, the golf course, as another secondary access road?
An alternative, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Not in place, not in place of.
Maybe a tertiary.
Whatever the second arm is. So it would be an additional street, right, to hit Placentia. It looks like there's a service road of some sorts, when you look at a map, coming out of the golf course that feeds into the back of the firehouse, or something like that? So can we make that an actual access road, so that, again, we reduce traffic concerns?
Well, save that if, if and when we get a motion. I want to jump in on one quick thing. The 3,800 dwelling unit development scenario was the assumption for affordability that that was 40%? Did we just carry that through?
No.
So when it was analyzed for its financial feasibility, was 40% used, or what?
No.
Eight twenty-one for Concept One, eight oh-two for Concept Two, and eight twenty-one for Concept Three. So they kept that base number through all the concepts.
Okay.
So you don't increase it with the number of units.
Okay.
The only reason to increase the number of units is financial feasibility.
Okay. All right, any other questions of staff? Or can I close the public hearing now? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Would anyone like to make a motion? A motion by Commissioner Dixon. What is your motion?
I move that. Where is this? I move that we recommend to the City Council that the scope of the environmental study in the form of the draft preferred land use plan for the Fairview Developmental Center specific plan, without committing the city to a specific course of action on a specific plan. And the scope of the analysis will be as described in Exhibit A. And we don't need to include the specific number of affordable units at this point. The total envelope, or the, would be thirty, 23 on the minimum, 38 on the maximum, 35,000 square foot, commercial maximum, 10,000 square foot minimum, public open space, 12 acres minimum, no maximum, and that, those are the, that's the envelope, as described in Exhibit A.
Okay, is there a second?
Could we add additional recommendations for the study, at this point?
You can, you can second for discussion purposes, if you'd like.
Okay.
Okay, second by Commissioner Andrade. Go ahead.
To include a study for, I guess in this case would be a third access point, to mitigate traffic concerns and accessibility, out of Shelley Circle Trail, that feeds into Placentia. Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Does the maker of the motion accept that?
For, yes, for analysis, absolutely.
Okay. Do you want to speak to your motion?
I would. I had many concerns, as evidenced by my communications with residents, and staff, and my review of the reports. But I think that, for the purposes of what we're doing here, this envelope is perfectly appropriate for environmental review. We will, and so I think that we need to move forward with this, at least to get to the next stage, where we can actually start hammering out these details. And hopefully do this before the end of the year, so we don't have to have new legislation, which could, who knows? And we also don't have, the state step in and decide that we're wool gathering and not making progress. There are many concerns that residents have, there are many concerns that I have, but this is for the environmental review. This is to determine the scope of the impacts. And as Commissioner Martinez pointed out, there will be various alternatives, that will be analyzed, and I hope that the staff has been listening, as far as what we'd like to see for alternatives, and the type of things we'd like to see. And I think that 3,800 as a, as a max, is, is a comfortable area to contemplate mitigation, but that we'll also be looking at, you know, how those mitigation would be considered with the various units throughout the EIR, the draft EIR. So that is my motion, I support moving this forward, I think that the public is looking for the certainty that the legislation calls for, and I'd like to see that in the future, and I'm hoping this comes back to us after council reviews it, when the specific plan starts getting cooked. Thank you.
Commissioner Andrade?
I have a quick question, as, before we move on. Is there, to ensure that there is 40% affordable units, only counting the numbers for very low and low income, because that is true affordability, not including moderate income, to achieve that 40%, would we need to increase the maximum of units built?
I just want to make sure I understand the question, Commissioner Andrade. The, for environmental review purposes, I think we've mentioned a few times, that the affordability of the unit is, is not taken into account, a unit's a unit's a unit. However, for the, for example, the financial feasibility of the, the, the specific plan range, with the total maximum number of units relating to the number of affordable units, that does have a relationship. And so, if, if the 40% affordable units in 2,300 were, were not financially feasible, if you take that same 40% and apply it to 3,800, it's going to have a linear relationship, and then that affects how reasonably, the reasonable expectation of what could be developed, right? So I, I think if we were to take the 40% and apply it to any development range, essentially that takes the conclusion of the financial feasibility study and just moves it along. And then we are in the same place where we were, which is, which, which would be, we would be unable to identify what's reasonably expected from a market developer to build this.
Yeah. Okay, again, I just wanted to ensure that when we're looking at affordable, moderate is not included, because it's not. Moderate income is not, it's not a family that's struggling, right? As you saw in this report, it's very low and low income. So I just don't want that 690 to be totaled in the, oh, we, we achieved the 40%, we're set, right? But, okay, so, but this motion does, right, Commissioner Dixon, it says excluding any specifics on affordability. So, and so again, we're hearing from our community, increased concerns about the level of traffic is completely valid, if we're potentially putting in close to 4,000 units in this area. So considering this third access point is certainly essential. I think it was also great, I appreciate that we're including in this report, a consideration for City Council to include harbor frontage. You heard from some of our golfers, our community members, as we talk about walkability and accessibility, if we take over those six or five holes in the front of Harbor Boulevard, would truly make this community much more accessible, and less cars, as well, right? Because if folks can drive to and from, if kids can, if parents can walk their kids to the park, that's less cars on our road, so it would help mitigate some of those concerns. And then, of course, right, we heard one of our constituents share about, you know, being able to respond to our, to, to the local workforce, to the trade workforce here in our community, that's teachers, that's laborers, carpenters, you name it, providing an increased number of affordable housing and development in this area is absolutely essential for our community. Yeah, nothing else to add.
All right. Anyone else have comments?
Of course.
Commissioner Martinez?
Thank you.
I'll just remind you, it's 9:47 PM.
It's early. So this maximum number of dwelling units, I think I've mentioned before, that I would prefer studying a higher maximum, just so that in the future, if it's proposed, more analysis need not be done. So that if a, a developer does end up using density bonus law, and they go over 3,800, maybe it's just a little bit over, but that little bit, then they're going to have to analyze that, right? So, would the maker of the motion be amenable to making it a, to recommend to the City Council, make the EIR a 4,000 dwelling unit maximum?
Yes, I could do 4,000, it's, because that's it, envelope.
Okay, does the second agree to that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Just general comments. I mean, same, same general thing for the square foot maximum, I'm not going to ask to amend it, but, you know, something to consider. And not really a big fan of standalone commercial, but I'm not going to ask to include that in the motion. But what I, what I do want to say is that for the number of units that we build, right, if we do end up gearing towards that maximum number of units, and we don't reach 40% very low income or low income, I think that's still a very good thing for people who need very low income and low income housing. And that's because, if someone wants to live in Costa Mesa, and they are at an above moderate income, they're going to live in Costa Mesa, they're going to pick whatever apartment is available to them, they're going to go, I don't know, to the west side, see an open available apartment, and they're going to be able to pay for it, and they're going to be able to rent it. With more units, including more above moderate income units, as many as that may be, that means that those people who may be living in what I and others call naturally occurring affordable housing, they'll want to upgrade, they'll want to go to the new development, they'll want to go to this new community in Costa Mesa that's just been built, and they'll move over there, they'll move into the above moderate income housing, and they'll free up space in west side Costa Mesa, in east side Costa Mesa, that previously was not available to people, because there were people above their income range for that rent, living there. So providing more above moderate income housing, I believe will also do well for affordability in Costa Mesa as a whole. So, I'm hopeful, and I'm grateful to the maker of the motion for expanding the, the envelope of how many dwelling units we'll be studying in this EIR. And I'm hopeful that when we get to the specific plan process, went to the development process even, that we get as many units as possible, because we are in a housing crisis. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Vice Chair Zick.
I know, it's 9:51.
I took the words right out of my mouth.
So, you know, on page two of the, well, I'll remove any suspense if there is any, I'm not supporting the motion. On page two of the staff report, it says that the process has now progressed to the preferred plan framework and environmental review. It's like, really? We've, we've progressed? What, I missed something. I read with great interest. What, how did we progress to this point? It was in September of 2024 that we got our first briefing on this plan. Concept Two, 3,450 units, 575 very low, 325 low, 25,000 commercial, 18 acres, open space, two access points. This is back in September. I don't see a whole heck of a lot that's changed. Yeah, a couple of numbers have changed, 35,000 instead, 25,000, 12 acres instead of 18 acres. I mean, I, I don't know, it's like, what, how have we progressed at all on this? I don't see that we have. I, I see this strategy, and I can appreciate the strategy that says, you know what, and you're not saying it exactly this way, but this is the way I, I hear it. We still don't have a clue what our plan is going to be, but if we make it the worst-case scenario, and go study the environmental impacts, then we'll have that base covered, and then in parallel, we'll try to figure out what in the world we want to do with the FDC. But that isn't exactly the way you talk. And that's what makes me very uncomfortable. I kind of feel, in some respects, that we're being gaslit. Is there any hope that this project will ever be 2,300 units? I don't think so. Yet you keep saying it, 2,300 minimum. It's never going to be 2,300. Why? Because you've convinced yourselves that it is not financially feasible. Why? Because of the assumption that 40% is going to be affordable. Why? Because that's in the housing element. Okay, well, if 2,300 and 40% are in the housing element, and that's infeasible, number one, that's a mistake and an oversight in our housing element, but number two, if you want to fix that, you either pack in a whole bunch more market rate units, which is your strategy, or you reduce the 40% to something that makes it financially feasible. Secondary access road. What's the term you're using now on that? You're saying, should it be needed? Really? Should it be needed? It's more gaslighting. I think you're convinced it's needed. I was told by somebody that isn't here tonight, staff, that if it is one unit above 2,300, we need that secondary access road. So if you're playing pretend with me, you're doing a, a poor job, because I'm seeing right through it. We're going to need a secondary access road. Six holes of the golf course are going to be affected. 210,000 rounds a year are played on the two golf courses, and it's about 50/50 between Los Lagos and Mesa Linda. And, and you're going to impact six holes on that course? For, for, for what reason, again? Oh, so you can build a whole bunch of market rate units? And why are you trying to do that? So you can get 920 affordable units? You mean you can't find another way to get the 920 affordable units? I mean, isn't that the problem you're trying to solve? I don't know, I, I just, I, I just think this thing is all wonky, and to go off and study it environmentally makes no sense. You, you, you do listen, I, I hear some responsiveness to what you're hearing, but what I'm not getting is realistic feedback. The community benefits have been added as allowable uses, you know, the library, the art studio, or whatever, the museum, or whatever that was. There are. that was. They're allowable uses. Yeah, but you're never going to see it built here. That, that accomplishes nothing. 12 acres minimum open space, yet there's going to be levers and incentives. Levers and incentives? I don't even know what that means. Are we getting anywhere close to what we say we should be getting, 40 acres? No. Nobody's, nobody's making any sounds about how we're going to accomplish that. You didn't include in this staff report the community survey results that were in the staff report in May 27. I think those are important to include in the presentation, the presentation to city council, so that they're not being gaslit on this also. The community couldn't have been any clearer that they wanted the 2,300 unit plan. They couldn't have been any clearer that they did not want the secondary access road. They couldn't have been any clearer that they wanted park space instead of more housing. Couldn't have been any clearer. And, and we're ignoring them. And you might say, no, we're not ignoring them. We're just putting forward a worst case plan, so we go study the environmental impact. And I say, well, why don't we put forward the plan that we really want, that the community really wants, and then go study that? No. Council, good luck.
I don't want to have to admonish you, Ned, at 10:00 in the night. I, I will be supporting the motion. I think it's time we sent this to council for their consideration. And I appreciate certainly the public comment tonight, but the, the discussion and the dais, I think there were some good ideas. And I also appreciate the cooperation in trying to give the council something that's reasonable for at least consideration of the environmental review. I know two things about the FDC with, I would say, some certainty. One, the state owns the property. And two, the state's going to dispose of that property. What we don't know is when that's going to happen. And we also don't know who, presumably a master developer, is going to take on the risk to develop what we're envisioning here, which puts us in a kind of awkward situation. And I think this is the frustration I'm hearing from my colleague to the right here, which is, is this what the community wants? And I don't think that's necessarily the question before us, because there are a number of variables that are way outside of our control. What we do have control over is putting together a plan with some parameters and making some thoughtful decisions and considerations, hopefully coming up with a specific plan that gives very clear guidance, that operates as a regulatory document. And we will see what happens. That's the best that we can do. It's not very satisfying, but that is what we have to go through. This is not an academic exercise. To my mind, what I think we should be striving for is what can actually get built to meet the needs of the community, to provide affordable housing, to provide more open space and recreational opportunities, to provide some more thriving commercial, and to create really a new paradigm for a neighborhood, which is, I think, a tremendous opportunity for us here. So those are my comments. With that, let's call for the question.
I had a very quick follow-up.
Okay, Commissioner Dixon.
I know it's.
You really just want the last word tonight?
No, no, no. But in response to Vice Chair Zick, and, and because I want to be very clear that in the maker of the motion, and in my intent, is that this is for the environmental review strictly. This is not making any sort of value judgment on what could potentially end up in the specific plan. I think I made myself extraordinarily clear. I do not want to stray from the legislation. I do not. I think 2,500 max is what the legislation says. I don't ignore shall. That's my opinion, and that's what I would recommend. However, for the purposes of this exercise, I think we do need to move forward so we can get to that discussion about the specific plan. I think some of the frustration is that, and it's got to be from staff's side as well, that you're hearing from all of us, with all these different goals and all these different desires, and then so you're trying to put together a staff report that moves the project forward, that may appear to the public and that there are specifics in here that we're tied to, we're not. This is the environmental review. That's why I asked the question about the project description. That's why I asked the question about the over mitigation. I want to make sure we're not locking ourselves in to 4,000, right? We're not at all. This is, this is to look at the outside envelopes, as Dr. Baumeister said, the buoys. So that's, I just want to make that clear, Vice Chair Zick, because I have an extraordinarily number of concerns that I share with you, but that's, that will be at the specific plan discussion point. And that's why I made the motion. I think it's very important to move this forward so we can get there.
I'm not mad at you.
One last point, and not because I want the final word, because we're already past 10 o'clock. But I, I, and it's not necessarily to be part of the motion, but I really would like the harbor frontage option to come back to Planning Commission for consideration. I know the plan is to send it to council, but we have been through this for a very long time. And I think we'd be doing ourselves, as well as the community, to service if we didn't at least hear, hear that before it actually gets to council. So, all right, now let's call for the question.
That motion carries 5-1 with Commissioner, or Vice Chair Zick voting no.
All right, we have no old business, no new business, departmental reports. Mr. Yang, Public Services?
I'll spare everyone the pain. No, no reports from Public Services. I defer back to the chair. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Ty, anything else?
Thank you. Just a brief report, just to thank the members of the Planning Commission, public for participating in the neighborhoods where we all belong events. We will be doing a series of pop-up outreach events at back-to-school nights. And then, I think Commissioner Martinez mentioned, the next event is September 10th for North Costa Mesa. It will take place at Fieldwork at 150 Polareno Avenue, 6 to 8 p.m., September 10th. But I know, I think we'll see you before then. But with that, thank you so much.
Sure. And lastly, Mr. Preziosi, anything from City Attorney?
I do not, but if I did, I'd adjourn to the next meeting.
All right, I will adjourn the meeting.